14th, we're here in the auditorium. We are going to be having a workshop with the Oyster of a school board and administration. The purpose of a workshop is to provide the school board information and to have the school board ask questions and for clarification and help us as administrators move in the direction that the community would want us to move in. The workshop is not a decision-making time. It's a time for reflection, conversation, and discussion. And so for the community at large, you won't see any motions this evening like you see in a regular board meeting. And I'm going to turn it over to Tom.
Thanks, Jim. So the function tonight, I think, is to have the middle school to high school and the elementary school principals present ideas for the next phase of the reopening of the schools. So the idea is to kind of develop some possibilities and then on the 21st to come in and we'll have a process I would see similar to the one that we had in August where we would have a set of options and we'll select. It may be that we decide we can't do it on the 21st, but that's the schedule that we have. So the idea is tonight is to help begin to craft, suggest, and work toward those models that might be presented to us on the 21st. So we're going to start with the middle school. So I don't know who's here for that. Jay?
I'm going to introduce Jay Richard, the middle school principal. Andrea is our special ed coordinator and Bill is the assistant at the middle school. They've been working very hard to put some ideas in front of you for your review and discussion.
Jay Richard, the principal at the middle school. I'm fortunate to have Andrea Beniskevich, as Dr. Moore said, and Bill Sullivan. I mean, this has been a true team effort. It's not just me. We meet every single day to problem solve and create good solutions for students. One of the things I wanted to start out with, we did it last week and I'll talk a little bit more about it later, is last week we had our students in to do the STAR assessment. I'd just like to share some of that data. What you're looking at here is the fall scores from last year when we were, you know, in person. Those were the results. And this is actually the results from this fall. What you actually see here on this slide is actually students, the scores are higher this year than they were last year. An example is sixth grade last year in reading was at the 65th percentile. And that what that means is at or above benchmark. And that same cohort group is actually at the 74th percentile. So I know there's been dialogue in education circles about actually students progressing during our current remote last spring and, you know, early this year. And actually, our current data shows differently. One thing I do want to mention is we have about 12% to 20% of our students who have not taken the STAR assessment. So we're working on a remote version to do that by the end of this month. So it's again, 12% to 20% of our students have not done the STAR assessment. So I just wanted to show you that quick data. Up to this point at the middle school, what have we completed? We did all the in-school orientations. I know some of you have already seen this, but I just also wanted to share it with the public. We did our orientations. That went very well. Starting on September 14th, we started to bring in targeted learners. We actually have more students than 65 now. And we've also started to bring in our MTSS targeted learners in tier two and three students. That started on 9:30. We actually had another session today. Some of the things we've been working on with those groups. You know, our counselors have been active, meeting with individual students when they come in. Variety of different things.
Do you want questions as you go?
It's up to you, Michael. Sure.
Is that, do those numbers include the fifth graders that are there every Wednesday anyhow?
I have a different slide for that to show kind of like what, like a full Wednesday looks like. So today, for example, Michael, we had approximately 200 students in the building. Not all at once, but 100 in the morning and 100 in the afternoon.
Jay, was that the STAR assessment? They took that in school?
Yep, they took that in school last week.
On paper or is it on the computer?
It's a computer adaptive test. They do it on their laptops. It's really helpful to get, you know, like a data point on the kids where they're at.
Jay, remember to speak right into that mic.
Okay. Sorry, I'm not loud enough. Is that okay? This past week, we had a lot of fun. The kids came in for the beam signing. We actually did school pitcher day as well last week by grade level. And, you know, exciting, everyone's excited to sign the beam. So there's still opportunities to do that. And also we'll do pitcher retakes for people that didn't come in. And we did invite remote students in at a separate time during the school day to get their pitchers taken. So successful. This is our current model, what we're doing. It's remote instruction Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday. And we do have small target groups in the building who are invited in. And Michael, here's the Wednesday piece. You know, fifth grade is in the building every single day. I mean, every Wednesday, AM, PM, about 120 to 140 students. And then grades six through eight, MTSS, again, that's close to another 100 to 120 students. So again, we had 200 students in the building today. What we're also doing is asynchronous learning on those days. Our staff also have office hours and individual work for grades six through eight. Bill's going to take over these two slides.
Sure. So what we've been meeting about and talking about, you know, maybe one of the, one of the things we could do is expand the fifth grade amount of time that they're in the building. So they're in the building now once a week on Wednesdays, AM, PM model. What we've talked about is the potential of bringing them in more. Okay? So that's one of the things we're talking about. If that's the direction we want to go, what we would do is survey the parents, find out, again, like we did earlier this fall, who would want to participate in that? Who would want to be remote? Who would want to bring their kids in to be part of that learning model? And with those responses, that could cause some class reassignments, some student reassignments. Just because if the numbers tip one way or the other, we're going to need to kind of look at that. And we'll talk about that in another slide as well. Oops, sorry, wrong button. So to bring more, one of the ways we could look at this is we could bring fifth grade students in, bring them in four days a week. We could bring them in three days a week. The days we were talking about, Monday, Tuesday, we love the Wednesdays with them in the building right now. We could keep them on a Wednesday or we could maybe take them out of the Wednesday, but make them Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, or Friday. So that's, there are different options we can talk about that way. And we could look at it like the elementary schools in an AM, PM hybrid model. And we'd break them up. Right now, how we have them broken up is by alphabet. But some of the things we're going to lose in that, and when we sit down and talk about these, these are, these are things we really need to discuss before we make these decisions. Remote learners, so the kids who are choosing to stay home, the families that have their kids at home right now, they're going to lose out on synchronous learning opportunities. So on, as we are right now, Mondays, Tuesdays, Thursdays, and Fridays, we have a schedule where there are synchronous learning lessons going on all the time, live with their teachers. If the teachers are in the building more, we're going to lose out on those opportunities for those remote kids to be live with their teachers. Our schedule right now, again, on those Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, it's five and a half hours. It's 9:00 to 2:30. Kids have teacher contact time. If we bring kids into school and in an AB, I'm sorry, AM, PM model, like we're doing on Wednesdays, that's, they're in the building two hours and 15 minutes. So they're going to lose approximately 50% of teacher contact time on those days that they are in because they're not going to have those teachers live with them. We're going to have to talk about special schedule reconfiguration because when we go from a remote model to bringing them in, we're going to be changing things. We potentially might have to change things like UA, the Unified Arts, maybe our Bobcat time. And that also will affect some of the music that we've got going on right now with the fifth grade as well. Because that right now, that is remote. And when we have kids in school, how are we going to do the remote and music? Those are things we just need to work out. Reconfiguration of teams, it could, again, we might have to reconfigure some of these teams. We're moving some kids from one team that they're established in now to another team. So maybe all the remote kids would have to be on a remote team. Now, that team isn't remote right now, so they have kids that are in class. When they come in, they may have to change teams and that's something we need to think about. Also with that would be special education changes as well in case management.
In the current remote day, in the five and a half hour remote day, how much of that time is actual class time, synchronous class time? It's not five and a half hours.
When they're in school, they're in school from nine to, you mean, when they're home, remote, nine to 2:30.
Right.
They've got at least one or two core classes. They've got a Bobcat time. They've got a UA time. And they've got office hour time. So they've got that, that day. And then there's lunch also in there.
Right. So you're not really losing half your time. You're losing, you're losing some amount of time, but not half.
Maybe it's not exactly five and a half hours. You're right.
And do you use office hour every day? So is that, again, could be?
That's not every day. That's, that's up to teachers and up to kids to make those.
But what is the core, like you mentioned the core, in a day without lunch and without office hours, how much time is a kid spending in actual class time with a teacher in front of him?
Five and a half minus.
Thank you for saying what I was trying to say.
Five and a half minus an hour, what do we have, an hour for lunch? An hour 45. So five and a half minus an hour and 45.
So it would be down to an hour.
Three and three quarters.
We have breaks though too for screen breaks.
Right. We do have a few minutes, five minutes here, there in between for a mask break or a screen break for kids to kind of movement break.
That brings it down to like an hour 20 or something like that.
Probably about three and a half hours. Three and a half hours, okay.
So an hour.
And just, we just want to show you what the current enrollment is in fifth grade right now. So we've got, what's that come to, 158 approximately? If you can do the math, almost 160 minus five, 155, something right around there. So that's where we are with our current enrollment.
Nice job. Again, I would just add in terms of the time piece, students are given the opportunity, particularly with those, you know, office hours, to meet with teachers, even though some chooses, students choose not to do so. But I know like particularly our tech integrator, she's always doing bookings, giving students assistance with technology outside of the, you know, the class that they're scheduled for. This is what Wednesdays look like again currently. Like today, it couldn't, it couldn't have gone better. Lisa Hoppy did a, you know, transportation was seamless the past couple of days. So now we're kind of getting that scheduled down, so it's working very well. Any questions about Wednesdays? We've kind of talked about that a lot, but. Yeah, Denise?
It's kind of more of a general question. A lot of the comments that we got, I should speak into the mic. A lot of the comments that we got from the teacher, the guild survey, and it seemed to me that the special educators in particular seemed really stretched because they were working with students both in person and they were also working remotely. So I mean, I guess it's not particular to the middle school, but I'm just, it kind of raised a red flag for me that, and I'm just wondering if we did move to this type of a hybrid model, how that would impact special education.
You want to talk about that a little bit, Andrea, what it looks like?
Yes. I would say when we first started in this model, it was very difficult for special ed teachers to figure out how to service students both in school and working remote. However, with the in-person model where the students needing the most support are in school and they follow the schedule with those students with para educator support, they are finding times when they are able to break away and support, support those other students remotely. For example, if they have two para educators working on their team, they may assign one para educator to check in with a remote student certain times of the day. And that's their person, that's their support person to check in. If we were to move to an AM, PM model in fifth grade, we would, we would have to reconfigure all the support again. It would take a little time to develop which students were in in the morning, which were in the afternoon, which para educator support which students. So it would take some reconfiguring. And if we had to do a remote team and a remote case manager, then it would mean potentially reassigning students and case managers. And they're, they're just starting to get to know them and building the relationship. So that would be something that we would have to work very closely on. Yeah.
I think I would just add too, if we decide to change the model, particularly with fifth grade, it's really important to bring those fifth grade teachers and start to have that dialogue in terms of what that looks like for them and their, their students. I mean, we really haven't had any significant conversations because we're just really starting to begin exploring bringing fifth grade in more frequently. So, but they're a very important piece, those teachers having those conversations. Yes, Al?
So do we have anything besides just the fifth graders? Because I know that's our targeted group, but I think what I, I think I was under the misimpression, my thought initially that wait a second, the older kids are going to be just fine doing the remote. Everything will be copacetic. Let's take the targeted group of fifth graders because they're doing the transition from the elementary to the middle school. And so we laid our eggs in that basket of the target group. But reading the letters and that, I don't think I believe that anymore. And I think that, I think just expanding to four days with the fifth grade and saying to everybody else, you're going to be, I don't, I don't feel comfortable with that. I really don't. I think that, I think sixth graders also need some time, seventh and eighth as well. And so rather than totally expanding everything and putting all the eggs in the basket of the fifth grader, I would prefer to see something that touches other kids as well.
Yeah. I mean, again, example today, Al, was we had, you know, 100 other students or close to 100 other students in grades six, seventh, and eighth grade, approximately 20 students per team. So we have started to expand and bringing those other students in in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. So it's not a full amount of those students. But, you know, we have used models like the orientation days that went very well where those other grade levels were in for one day per week. An example again was last week when we did the STAR, you know, the beam and the pitchers. And, you know, the kids are thrilled to be in the building, but we could also look at models like that. I mean, no one loves to have the kids in the building more than us. And the teachers say that too.
I just want to spread it around because I think if you're a seventh grade kid that is kind of struggling or an eighth grade, and again, you didn't actually need into the, you know, you're not a tier two or a tier three, something that just, the model just doesn't really work very well for you.
Yep.
It's kind of soul crushing to look at like, okay, well, we're going to do the fifth graders for four days a week, but the rest of you guys, well, you know? So I think in my mind, I would like to see a more equitable way that we attack.
Yep.
Just because you're in seventh grade doesn't mean you don't have needs as well.
Yep. But again, please know, we are bringing those students in that we identify, that, you know, teachers are identifying. And we are adding students gradually. What I mean by like that, like, you know, we added three students in seventh grade just for this week. So we're looking at that, you know, almost in real time with our teachers. But there are some things we need to make sure we do is when we bring a student in, we have to, there's COVID protocols that we have to look at very closely. Bill and I will talk about that shortly. As well as transportation, to be fair for transportation. Example is if we want to add a student on three to four days notice and they're getting their own transportation or riding their bike to school or walking to school, that's okay. But we need to help Lisa out and make sure we provide the list at least a week in advance to make sure the routes are okay. And, you know, we're picking the kids up at the right time, right place, et cetera. I don't want to speak for Lisa, but it can be very, very challenging. We'll leave it at that.
I just want to follow up on what Al's saying. Are you going to present the possibility of a five to eight hybrid model? Because when you talk about bringing kids in, it seems like for special things. There's not a regular bringing them in for instruction.
Right.
Which is what I would understand a hybrid model, similar to what we have in the elementary school. And so I guess one of the things I hope we come out tonight is how realistic and can that happen for a five to eight hybrid model where you're not just doing it for the fifth graders, you're giving kids five through eight the chance of coming into school on a regular basis, getting instruction in the school from their teachers?
Yep. We can. And we talk about those types of things daily. Again, I think the example I would use, Tom, we successfully brought every student in last week in AM, PM. But, you know, looking to expand that and the goal is to have about 25% of the students in the building at any one time.
Well, this would probably have 50% of the students. And if you're going to have the AM, PM similar to the elementary school, I just, I just wonder, are we going to see that possibility?
Yep, we can.
I mean, I don't know how other people feel. I think that's kind of what you're talking about, Al.
Yes.
This was very consistent with the, the letters that we got this week. And like Michael, I have a fifth grader who loves being in school. And you can see in those middle grade, just the, even beyond those that, that send up the, the flags of needing the extra support, just students at large hungering to connect with each other. So like Al and Tom, do you anticipate, are there sort of constraints or trade-offs that you're seeing with having 50% of students in the building at any one time?
Well, there's a couple of things, I think, again, you know, the six feet of social distancing in the classrooms. And I have some pictures I can show you real quick, kind of what that looks like. You know, we don't want any more than 10 to 12 students in any given classroom at any time because we need to again, have the appropriate spacing. So that's, you know, that's definitely in consideration. Again, I have a slide for that. But, you know, we've looked at that. We've talked about different models in terms of, you know, can we bring the students in maybe twice a week? You know, have five, six come in on Mondays and Tuesdays in an AM, PM model. One of the challenges we also do, and you know, it's hard, you know, it's hard for me to talk about the challenges, but we have them in terms, particularly with like lunch, you know, how do we do lunch? You know, mask breaks due to our limited space at the middle school. So there are some, you know, challenges with that.
The other thing too, and you know, Dr. Moore spoke to this, is that the middle school, my understanding is the middle school has the highest number of faculty and staff who need to work remotely due to health considerations, I believe is what you said. And so while I totally, and I mean, I've seen the letters too, and I very much appreciate all the feedback that we've gotten, I'm also very cognizant of what our limitations are as far as our staffing goes.
You see, got ahead of me, but this was the next slide, just some of our unique challenges and limitations. You know, I think we have 11 staff members right now, professional staff that are teaching remotely.
But could they teach remotely and still have the students in the class? For example, if you had an English teacher on an eighth grade team who couldn't be in, could you have the students still be in the school and that teacher come in remotely to the students in the classroom? And maybe a para who could be there? I mean, are there creative ways in which we can get around this? Because otherwise, we're just, never going to happen, I don't think.
We're doing that now, Tom. So when, for example, the eighth grade came in last week, I think it was what, on Thursday? So the remote teachers are teaching the students remotely. So they're on the screen. You know, you have 10 to 11 students inside the classroom. And then we have, you know, adult, an adult in that space too, to provide supervision. So we're, we're currently doing that with all our remote teachers.
So Jay, I think the question is, could you do that on a broader scale? Because the paras that you're reassigning to those classrooms most likely have students assigned to them, they're special education paras. And so you might be able to do that on a limited basis. But if you were doing five through eight on a comprehensive basis, it would require additional staffing because you can't take a special ed para and put them in a classroom full-time.
Correct. I mean, we're doing it day by day right now, but if we expand the model, we'd have to look at that more closely and make sure we have appropriate plans and the proper supervision in those classrooms for those remote teachers.
Do you have paras that are not assigned to special ed?
We do not have any. No, I do not have any regular program. AIDS. Well, you know, I give a lot of credit to our UA staff too, like on a day like today, that, you know, they're coming in and helping out. You know, I had a health teacher in an English language arts classroom supervising the kids while the teacher taught remotely. So it's, it's a team effort. It really is. And I've been really appreciative in terms of the collaboration and willingness of our staff to rise to the occasion.
Jay?
Yes, Brian?
Are you able to use, I mean, I know your space issues are a big part in the middle school, but a couple of issues are, first of all, we have the multipurpose room, the gym that we could probably use for classrooms that would spread them out. But I know this week I was, I just happened to look online today and I know on Monday the, the THHS came out with some guidelines where actually you can, we can be up to three feet from each as long as they're wearing a mask. So I mean, that gives us a little more leeway of what we can put in a classroom. Granted, three's a little tight, but you know, they, three to six is what they recommend. But then ultimately, the big question is, in 12 weeks, when all these accommodations run out for the teachers, what happens? You know, do they, are they going to come back? Are they not going to come back? I mean.
Most of these teachers, Brian, who are out are not out on the Emergency Medical Leave Act. They're out on ADA. So their issue is long-term, not short-term.
So we're not using FICRA or any of those?
We're not what?
Using FICRA or any of those other ones?
Yeah, we are, but for very few of our staff. Most of them are out because of prevailing health concerns, especially at the middle school.
But at what point do they come back?
They don't come back as long as they have a medical reason not to come back. They can teach remotely. You know, that's a very, I mean, Tom's idea is a, is a real idea. I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that it's, that to do that long-term, we'd, we'd need additional staff to monitor those classrooms. But if somebody has a health concern, our obligation under federal law is to accommodate that health concern.
Right. But let's say they say COVID's over and, you know, there's a vaccine or what have you, there's a cure or what is, are they still out?
No. If they don't have a medical reason to be out, they have to come in.
But, you know, okay.
I just want to, I just want to be clear. These are a highly susceptible personnel due to their issues. It isn't a short-term issue.
It's, you know, it just is kind of a soft line of where it is, of when, you know, because we could be fully back in and they could still be going under the ADA. And then all of a sudden, we got to hire more teachers to replace them. But we're, you know, it's, and it's, it becomes cost prohibitive at some point.
Yeah, it probably would be at that point. I mean, if, first of all, you know, you're in the middle of a pandemic and that's what's driving this. So the pandemic is over, then they would have a much harder case presenting a health concern for not coming to work. So I think that's really the issue. Pandemic's over, staff come back to work like they normally do. But until the pandemic's over, these particular individuals have a, you know, a, a federal law that governs their absence. Now, every single one of them is willing to work remotely. So I don't want the message to go out that these teachers aren't willing to work. They are willing to work and they're working now even under those conditions. So it's, it's, it is an issue that ultimately will resolve itself with the end of the pandemic. But we're not talking short-term leave here. We're talking people with, with really significant health issues.
And I don't doubt their dedication at all. We have the best staff.
Yeah.
So I, by no means am I, please don't take it that way.
No, I wasn't saying that necessarily for you, Brian. I was saying that for the audience.
I'm just concerned long-term because I don't, it doesn't look like this is going to be ending anytime soon. So we're going to have this challenge.
Whole year.
The whole year, if not into next year, school year, obviously. And I'm just kind of curious what the, you know, as we're in budget season right now, what it's going to look like. Just had a discussion.
Well, the other, I just, I know that we're kind of a bit mixing apples and oranges, but I just want to make sure that we remind everybody that the agreement we have with the teachers ends on June 30th. The board then would be able to negotiate different criteria or they can invite the teachers back to the table to, to negotiate different criteria within this school year.
Did the MOU dictate six feet?
Yes.
Did it dictate six feet or did it dictate the CDC guidelines?
Six feet. Which were the CDC, CDC guidelines at the time we did the MOA.
But what if they're not anymore though? So we're stuck with the six feet.
And you have to sit down with the teachers and negotiate it from six feet to three feet.
That puts a real hamper in our goals.
But that was the state of the art at the time we wrote it.
And if you wanted to go down that path, you have to tell the negotiating team to go back in.
Right.
And talk to the, to the teachers.
I want to come back to the model, okay?
Yeah, of course.
Would it be possible to have a staged entry of grades? To start, I mean, say you're going to like start with the fifth, say fifth or fifth and sixth, and say, okay, we're going to get the lower school in. And have the, for a while, you know, not for a long while, but have then, as a second stage, have the seventh and eighth come in, if that makes it easier for you to kind of integrate, to move to that, the hybrid models I've described it.
Yeah.
Is that, would that, I mean, I, I could see kind of if you just like flip a switch and say, okay, we're going to five to eight, that might be, might be hard logistically and, and all kinds of other ways. You know, could you stage that in so you could get there, but not all, not, you know, the same week?
Yeah, we'd work, we'd work on it for sure. One of the challenges with sixth grade, and I don't want to misspeak, but I believe I have four content teachers who are fully remote due to what Dr. Morris described. So I think one of the things we have to do is look at staffing to make sure we can appropriately staff those spaces with supervision. So that's, that's, that's a piece of it, honestly, Tom. But of course, we would definitely look at it and do our best to make it work, just like we did today.
It seems like you're going to have to find, I mean, I'm sorry. You're going to have to find some way to fill those holes. Otherwise, you're just going to be remote for forever, you know, for the entire year. It seems like, I don't see any other option really. Because if you say, we can't, we can't bring them in because we have these, these, these people out, then how does that dictate, doesn't that dictate that it's going to be that way for, almost till the end of the year? It's, you know, sometimes it's...
Oh yeah, I understand.
It's a problem, a big one, but one we're going to have to find some way to get around.
Yep.
So what I was going to say in that case, since you said sixth grade has the staffing problem, rather than starting, say, with five, six, why not start with five, seven? I mean, what, what levels have the staffing that present the least difficulty in terms of having a classroom teacher? So, so it may, I mean, I would go down that pathway. The ones that have the most staffing, that are most set up, that you can do it, start with them. And I really like Tom's idea, the transition other. It very well could be the sixth grade is the last one that we bring in, because it's the most difficult in terms of staffing. But I don't think that hindrance should stop the seventh and eighth. I mean, the ones that we can staff and work, start with those.
Yeah, yeah. You want to add something?
Yeah, I just, I think in addition to the staff, one of the challenges that we'll just have to plan for is the students that want to stay remote.
Yep.
So if we have staff that are out, that's okay. We can find adults to man the classrooms. But if the staff are in the building, say, four days a week teaching now, but you still have 50 kids remote for one grade, how do they get their education? And if, if we want to be committed to letting them choose to be remote, we just need time to plan, who will teach them? If it can't be the teachers that are all in the building teaching, the students that are coming in. So it just would take some time to figure out. That's why, would it mean they'd have different teachers? You know, we'd have to figure that out. Would they move to a whole remote team? And those are the things that would just take a little time to figure out. So it's, in my mind, it's more about those students. How do we meet those needs than the staff?
And we'll hear from families about individual students, I believe. We're, we'll be talking about the survey questions, and so we'll be able to match what the community response is. I did have a question about, a related question about resources. When the budget and staffing levels were set last year, it was pre-pandemic. And no one would expect a school to be able to provide the same level of service of, of, you know, of student progress towards outcomes in a much more challenging situation with the same resources. So if we were able to find emergency funding for this kind of emergency year, what types of things would close the gap in your mind between, between what students would achieve in a normal year and the progress that they're making now, both socio-emotional, academic, supporting teachers so that they don't burn out in this situation? And I raise this because one of the questions is, if there is a mismatch between teachers who want to stay remote and students that want to come in, is there the ability to bring in additional teachers who could take the in-person, you know, the hybrid classes and reassign the teachers who prefer to stay remote to provide additional support on the relearning day for students? Or, you know, in that morning time when the students are at home before they come into school, you know, at these, at these various grades? So thinking creatively about temporary staffing to get us through this, this period, as Brian was mentioning, you know, I'd love to hear your thoughts on what kind of, what that, that kind of patching hole staffing and reconfiguration might look like.
Yeah, I mean, as Andrea likes to say, you know, we would, we would plan for that. You know, I've actually been very fortunate. I don't think we've had one substitute in the building. So we've been able to staff things internally with everybody working together. So we haven't really faced that challenge yet of trying to bring somebody else in from the outside to, you know, meet our needs in terms of supervision. But I mean, it's something we could definitely look at, for sure.
Or could we reconfigure teams so that teachers teach in their subject area, but multiple grades, like seventh grade and eighth grade English, if they're teaching only remote or only in building students, depending on how that shakes out?
Yeah, we could. I mean, again, we'd have to look at that in terms of certifications, but we would need to shift people around to meet, to meet those needs. Does that make sense, Michael?
Yeah, yeah, because I could, I could see a scenario where, based on preferences, you might end up able to assemble a team, a fully remote team, but it has to be seventh and eighth grade in order to make the numbers work out.
Right, yep.
You know, and I just, part of me just says, we have to be mindful of what we're asking of the teachers. And, you know, I, I was, when I read that Guild survey, you know, I was really concerned about burning out teachers and how, you know, and, and where I, that is a great creative idea. Now we're talking about a teacher who's already started a school year, who's maybe been teaching, say, seventh grade. And now we're going to say, oh yeah, and now in a couple of weeks, you also have to teach eighth grade. So, you know, I'm just, it's just, I, there is no, let's face it. And any decisions that we make, it's, it, there's going to be downsides, absolutely. But I think one of the things we have to do, in my mind anyway, is to maximize the student experience, but also, you know, keep in mind that teachers, like, we can't be burning all our teachers out. Like somehow, we have to find that balance of enhancing what the student experience is. And certainly, we've had so many letters from people that want their students to have more in-school time. And the question really is, how do we do that without, like, completely burning our teachers out? And having enough staff to cover everybody safely as well.
Right. I mean, I would just share real quick, I mean, ideally, we'd want to look at it to make sure we're not shifting teachers' grade levels. Because I've never done that in my career, shifted teachers' assignment during the academic years. You know, you're coming back from, you know, the Thanksgiving recess, now you're also teaching eighth grade. I think what we would need to do is give teachers appropriate time, professional development, collaboration time, kind of like we did at the beginning of the year, if we were going to make a significant shift like that in a teacher's, you know, professional life during the academic year, if that makes sense. I mean, that would be a huge, significant shift. That'd be like, kind of, I don't want to belabor this, but all of a sudden saying, Jay, after Thanksgiving break, you got David Goldsmith's job. I love elementary school kids too, but it would be a significant change in my professional life. And it definitely would have some challenges.
One of the other considerations, I think, in this, and as I was preparing for the workshop, I thought about something Al said, and I may, I'm paraphrasing Al, but you said something in the last workshop to the effect of, you know, one of the advantages of starting with some version of a remote model is that you, you, you get to experience it, you get to refine it, so that if you really, really, really need it, you've, you've had, you've gone through that experience of refining it and, and, and living it. And, you know, I have thought about, you know, thinking of our elementaries, how we sometimes combine, you know, second, third grade, third, fourth, et cetera. That's, that's just a creative way to sort of, you know, thread that needle again. However, if, we also have to be prepared to go back to a full remote for a period of time, hopefully, a short period of time, hopefully. And if we start really shuffling people around, then I think we lose a lot of that advantage that we've gained, you know, by how we started and how we've gotten to this point.
I agree. I mean, our current schedule is actually working very, very well. And the goal with our schedule was to create a schedule that works in remote and also hybrid. So it'd be kind of like limited change for staff and students. So that's the schedule we currently have.
When you say it's working really, really well right now, what's the yardstick for that?
A lot better than last spring. I mean, the biggest thing, like, I get a lot of, I get a lot of feedback, Michael, honestly, from students and parents and staff that what we're doing right now is much, much more effective and working better than last spring. I mean, last spring, you know, was a, like that, quick pandemic. But I'm very proud of my staff, the experience they're providing students right now in our current situation. So again, it's a comparison to last spring.
Totally agree that it's night and day compared with the spring.
I'm sorry, say that again?
I totally agree that it's night and day compared with the spring.
And I like to hear that, trust me, as a principal.
I'm not sure. I think that's the yardstick we should be using, but that's...
Right, but it's better, and a lot better, people told me. So I, I do feel good about that, against the reflection of my staff.
So, I know we kind of stopped you in the midst of the PowerPoints. I don't know if you...
Quick pictures, everyone. I mean, that's what a classroom looks like at the middle school. There's our cafeteria. We have some challenges. Usually, we only can have 16 kids in there. You know, we do have some storage challenges as well. Some of the spaces that we could potentially use have, you know, we have storage there, particularly in classrooms, because we removed a lot of desks and put them in different areas. And in the top right corner, I'll be just real quick. I mean, that's an example of some students coming into the building and kind of what that looks like and how they're spaced. Potential next steps, we've kind of already talked a lot about that. You know, our, our goal is always to try to bring in more kids. It really is. This is kind of what COVID looks like every single day for us. You know, the amount of challenges. I mean, just last night, I got an email from, you know, a staff member where their, a family member had symptoms. And I instructed, told that staff member that they could not come into the building. And, you know, I'm calling our school nurse in real time last night at 7:30. Fortunately, those tests came back negative this morning, actually, so they can return to the building. You want to talk a little bit, Bill, about how our day starts and ends?
Well, in terms of the COVID stuff, we, you know, we take it really serious. We've got, we've got a spreadsheet and a group of people that meet daily, Andrea, myself, Jay, the school nurse. And we go through the list before school starts to make sure we know which kids are allowed in and which aren't, because we, our, our list change daily of who's coming in. So we really have to be on top of, you know, what kids now have been affected. And our affected kids, and you can see by the number, 70 kids so far have been affected. And what that really means is, you know, they may be, they're not necessarily the ones that are sick, but they've got a sick family member. But if they have a sick family member at home, that means they can't come into the building until their sick family member gets a negative test. And sometimes that can be days. So we have to keep on top, on top of that. And the other thing we do is, you know, at the same time, we're talking to our sports teams too, because we have to look outside of that and see, well, what are they doing outside of school? Are they playing on the field hockey team or on the volleyball team? So it's just, it's, you know, it's a lot of work on our end, but, you know, we want to make sure our kids and our staff are safe, and that's why we put the time and effort into it. Yeah, Denise?
So this is another issue, because if we move to this hybrid model, so right now, those kids, they can't come in the building. It's not a big deal, because we're fully remote anyway.
Exactly.
I mean, they might miss out on Wednesday, but other than that, they're not missing out on their education, you know. But now, all of a sudden, we have 70 kids that can't come in. We're in a hybrid model. How do those kids, you know, get their schooling for that period of time? So, yeah, it's just, I don't know. It's just very concerning.
That's it. I know I took up a lot of time. Any, any other questions?
Well, I guess I'd like to sense of the board that, personally, I would like to see at least the hybrid model put before us, five to eight. And we may decide for reasons people have brought up, that this is just too complicated, too hard, too many holes to go that way. But personally, I think just going with the fifth grade is too modest a change, leaving too many people remote. And I think that if we did that, it would be perceived as not, not a full enough step towards bringing kids into the school. And I recognize you're bringing them in in different ways, but not in a regular instructional way. So, so I'm, and you know, maybe the board might decide the fifth grade is the, you know, or, or no change at all. I mean, I'm not precluding any kind of decision, but I'd like, I'd like to see that option laid out. And if you, and if you decide to say, we want to stage it, that's the way it should go, I could see, I could see that, you know?
Yep.
But I mean, I think, like, speaking for myself, and I think certainly some of the letters, we'd like to see some progression so that they're, so we're not so heavily dependent on remote learning, which, for a variety of reasons, which we've read in the letters a lot, in terms of screen time, in terms of isolation, in terms of just engagement, you know, has its severe limitations. So, so I guess I'd like to see that before us, you know?
So I'll echo that. I, I think it made a great deal of sense to do the first phase, to really bring in those who are truly transitioning, fifth grade, ninth grade. But now that we're at this point, I, I've always envisioned us really taking a hard look at the equity issue that Al described, which is, so, you know, the isolation piece is loud and clear in what we're hearing from parents. And so if there's a way we can address that by bringing everyone in to a greater degree and on, in a consistent way, I'd like that to be our basic goal. You know, but obvious recognizing the limitations and threading that needle again.
Yes. Michael?
So right now, the fifth graders, I think, are the only group, maybe even the whole district, that are getting academic content, structured academic content every day, five days a week. Does that sound right?
Yes.
So that means that the fifth graders and the fifth grade teachers are not getting the benefit of having Wednesday as a relearning day or a meeting day or whatever. Why does that work for fifth grade and not for other grades?
It's been challenging, honestly. You know, like, when we're having staff meetings and things, I mean, the fifth grade teachers are really busy. Like you said, they're working Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday. We have had to, to help out transportation, made some shifts. We were ending the day at 2 o'clock. Now it's at 2:30, so that's something we're trying to honestly work through, Michael.
It's been a common complaint from the fifth grade teachers that they don't have that, Michael.
Maybe a couple more, then we move on, is that all right, or?
Yeah. Denise, go. I just want to point out too, that what, what we've heard from the Guild survey in terms of, I think part of the dilemma and why Wednesdays are so important is when you are doing an A.M. and a P.M., that extends your school day, and you, you don't have as much time, at least that's my interpretation. It seems like a lot of the comments that we saw on the survey from teachers that were doing A.M. and P.M. is that the Wednesdays is the only thing that's saving them, because their so, their day is so long. You know, they're teaching one group all morning, teaching a different group all afternoon. So we're, the fifth grade right now, because they are remote four days a week, and they're only coming in one day, then it's not quite, you know, and they are in, they're in their specials and stuff, so the academic teachers still have those blocks of time, their planning period and all of that. So that's my interpretation, and maybe it's not accurate, but it just seems to me that we saw a lot of comments in the survey that said, I don't even know how I'd even remotely be able to do this if I didn't have my Wednesdays.
I think any plan where we're bringing people in, I think we have to utilize, it's, and space is such an issue, and we're bound by an MOA for six feet, we have to use the multipurpose room and the gym. You know, we, I use it up in my district, and it's been a lifesaver. People are eating in the gym, you know, they're doing classes in the gym. NPR, same thing. It's just a big open space that we can, we can utilize. And I think it's, that's going to be able to at least spread, give us the room that we need, because you can easily get six feet in those rooms. So, which I know the, the original building with the fifth grade rooms, I don't know if you can fit five or six people in there, but they're so small.
We've been fitting, you know, 10.
That's more than I thought.
You know? It's tight, but it's...
Those are the smallest rooms in schools, so...
Again, with only 10 students, or, you know, eight students sometimes.
But if you got to utilize, if you need more space, I just don't think you have a choice, but you got to use the NPR in the gym. So whether we're giving up gym classes or what have you, but we got to do the academics when we get to that, to get to that part, so...
You see, then maybe if we go on to the next, is that all right?
Absolutely.
Okay, go ahead.
I just want to note that in the conversations about bringing students back, part of it is because our health and safety protocol has seemed to, you know, to work at the elementary school, at the middle school with the students that you've had in. And Durham and UNH as a whole has, you know, been, been, been welcomed, though there have been, there've certainly been cases. So we're fortunate that we have the, the low infection rates. Also to note that this is still a choice. The families will get to choose whether they're, they're coming in for the hybrid or not. I would think that at this point, or when we do shift to, to a hybrid model for various grades, it's, it's the families choose at that point, and then they can change if there's capacity. But this would sort of be the, this would be a major choice. We wouldn't be re-surveying families... be re-surveying families in six weeks and doing another major reshuffle, this would be sort of a shift if there were capacity, this is something for, for discussion, but I put that out there. I too would love to see the, a model with a emphasis on total, the total shift as an option, and then staged if needed, but, you know, definitely looking at what a total shift would look like. I wonder whether we could increase from two and a quarter hours, it's two and three quarters at the elementary schools right now, right?
Dictated, it'll be dictated by our buses, so that's really the, it normally isn't dictated by buses, but in order for Lisa to deliver students in, in the middle school and then deliver in the elementary school, it, we have to stagger it.
Right. Is that an option too?
So right now, right now, we're not staggering, because there's generally so few, five through 12 kids, but once we go to a hybrid model, we'd have to go back to staggering.
Is that something we could see next week also, is that sort of part of the model that will?
Absolutely, I have Lisa working on that now.
To have it slightly longer than the, than the two and a quarter hours?
I don't know if it'll be longer, I'm just going to show you what the staggering will be.
Right. To Michael's point earlier, I think that for the middle schoolers at least, it'll be different than the elementary, because they can have some synchronous instruction in the half day they're not there through their specials, right? If I understand that correctly, so I guess we'd see that, what that would look like as well.
Some, but I mean, again, we, we do have some specials in five, six, you know, in the building, actually giving short lessons, I mean, Joe Boucher did a art project today with, you know, a group of fifth graders, so those teachers aren't all fully remote, they're in the building at times, working with students in person, going to them.
She's talking about longer than a half day. You're talking about longer than a half day.
Exactly.
Yeah.
So, now I guess one possibility is that students would be in school for, you know, two to three hours in the afternoon, but in the morning, they'd have live instruction for some of that time at least.
Yep.
So that they don't have the full loss of synchronous.
Yeah, I mean, a good example, you see, would be music, you know, students getting their music lessons.
Yeah, absolutely. So, great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks for your time, appreciate it.
Is that clear, kind of what we, at least, at least probably two models, if you have a fifth grade model and a, and a K to five model, then maybe you might have a stage, an end stage, I don't, something like that.
We'll work on it, we'll start tomorrow.
Not an easy task to give you, I know. Hey, could we, high school? Dan?
Great, can you all hear me okay? Okay, I'll do my best to be able to see over the glasses, because I'm fogging up a little bit, so. So, right now, the high school, these are the phases that we talked about earlier, I just kind of wanted to go through them for the high school we talked about over the summer, to be fully remote, to have, be remote with targeted learners, which is a type of hybrid, to be in person with a flex, or have a large, and gradually bring more numbers in, and then have a 50% return, and then to be fully in. So these were the stages that we had talked about over the summer. So right now, we are in a remote, we are in a hybrid model at the high school with a small number of kids being in the building. So we have targeted learners coming in, we have about 50 students a day, and around 30 adults a day in the building. Those kids are not receiving, they are working on remote instruction in the building, except for students that may be getting related service, some different types of related services for their IEPs, or through, or executive functioning skills and things like that with our learning lab.
Denise, you have a question?
I know, right off the bat, but we got a couple letters from some ninth graders that said they hadn't met their teachers, and I thought that was the point of the orientation, so I was very confused by those letters.
So, the orientation that happened at the beginning of the year was during our teacher workshop days. So some of the teachers were able to come down and to meet the students, but not all of the teachers met with their students.
Okay.
The teachers that have met all of, for ninth grade, all of the ninth graders that are able to come to the building have met with their advisors and some of their teachers. We had some freshman teachers come to our day on the 7th to meet, Mr. Bluewin, for instance, is a biology teacher, that's primarily what he teaches, and so he came on the 7th to meet with some of those ninth graders, so that he could meet the kids in person. But, but it's, it is possible that there are teachers that ninth graders have, that they have not met in person yet. So we've had a variety of different things happening at the high school, a range of numbers of students coming in, so regularly, we have around 50 students or so, however, we have had the SATs, today we had the PSATs, and those numbers are, today, I believe we had 174, and we've, for the SAT day, we had around 168 students in the building. And they are, again, that's a highly monitored time, they're not passing through the hallways, it's not a bell schedule, it's a, it's a very structured time period. And then we've had ninth graders in, we had around 100 or so ninth graders in the morning, and 100 or so ninth graders in the afternoon for, for a social emotional learning connection kind of a day with advisors, and it was on the 7th, I've heard great things from kids and parents about that opportunity to come in and, and to work with their advisors. So those are the different types of days that we've had at the high school. So currently, we have targeted, targeted groups coming in, it could, and then we also have, targeted groups could be, could be a group for testing, like the SATs or the PSATs, it could be the ninth grade, it could be different athletic teams coming in, we have clubs that are going to start meeting in person, and then also academic needs. There's a lot of benefits to having these targeted groups coming in for obvious reasons, the social emotional learning piece, the connection, in-person connection, it's very easy to cohort, it's very easy to socially distance, all of these things that we talked about over the summer. And so what I wanted to do this evening is to give you models, but to also show you what it means for student living that model, because the high school is such a different kind of a, a different experience. So this is, this is a current student, this year, this is what their day looks like in remote, they're fully remote, this particular student is not coming into the building for targeted learning, so they have 80-minute sectioned-off classes for, on the blue day and then the white day, and then Wednesday is open for that office hour period for relearning and reassessment, for clubs, for these different activities, and then Thursday, and then Friday. So they have 80-minute classes, and so remote learners and target, the targeted learners coming in, they have classes four days a week, it's 160 minutes per class of contact time with the teacher. Michael, you asked the question earlier about, is that, you know, synchronous the whole time, you were talking, you were speaking with Jay about that. The 80 minutes and the classes that I've been in have not been completely synchronous in that it's not fully direct instruction. However, the teacher is working with the kids during those 80 minutes, and the teacher is accessible during the 80 minutes. So, we may have a teacher doing, you know, a 30-minute lesson, and then the kids break up into breakout rooms, and then they come back, and then they go do independent work, and whether the teacher's with them directly on the screen, or whether they're in small groups or independently working, that teacher is accessible for those 80 minutes. And I think this is important, because as I go through the models, this will shift, you'll see the impact. Wednesdays are really important days for the high school, there's a lot of relearning and reassessment that's occurring in the morning with students, teachers are meeting with groups of kids, so we have a lot of teachers, for instance, I was talking to a math teacher, and they had, they had mentioned that they had met with a group of 15 students in one of their math classes to do like a mini lesson during that time period. So, so the high school does use that time in the morning to meet with kids, and then in the afternoon, it's really around things like technology support, we have faculty meeting with Celeste Best and Kathy Pierce around different technology and curriculum supports that they need to be able to plan, we have different professional development options also available around technology, department meetings, committee meetings, those types of things are happening in the afternoon. And for high school faculty, one of the things that I'm concerned about, and Denise, you talked a little bit about this, I'm very concerned about, when you're teaching remotely, or even working remotely, it's really hard to stop. And so one of the things that I'm finding with the high school faculty is they're, they're working long hours, because it is, it's, your, your classroom is right here, and your work is right here, and you're, and it's in your home, and so I think that that's one of the challenges that our teachers have, is really turning them, turning that off. So I, my COVID data's at a different point than Jay's, Jay had it at the end, this is, this is really our, I'll give you a minute to look at that, I'm just going to grab my water while you look at that. So we haven't, we've had some impacts, we've had to put a few teams on hold for a day and give them a day off while we were waiting for some test results and some other information from people, and we've had some small breaks in programming, but nothing serious, nothing major that shut down the school. And I can make this available to you later on also. So in talking about these different models that are coming up, I'm going to be talking about all of the, all of the models adhere to all these things. So it adheres to the MOA, it adheres to the six feet of social distancing, and this is the information that I gave to parents when we were, when I surveyed them. So, when I surveyed the parents, at the top of the survey, it had this information, so that they knew what they were being asked. This happened to me last time. So these are the results of the survey, the bottom right-hand corner has our enrollment. I don't know if you can see this very clearly, but.
Yeah, we can see it.
So there's a significant number who are saying they would not attend if it was 50%. There's 141 of the, whatever, like, I guess, 504, you know, 550, it's a pretty significant percentage that are saying that they would stay remote.
And I think one of the things that I keep coming back to is, if we have a hybrid model and kids are in the building, there is a group of kids that are still at home, and so this will tell us exactly how many kids are still at home. And this is still going, this survey's still being completed, so people are, I'm going to leave it open into next week, and I'll, I can update you next week at the school board meeting, so that you can see the updated numbers.
When you do it, can you, is there like a, the only thing I would say when you do the survey and you leave it open like that, that when you, when you vote once, you only get one vote, you can't come in for a second?
You can come in a second time, but I ask the question, who is filling the survey out, and who the student is. So if they change their mind, I can, I can find out, I can ask them.
As long as I can do that, because I don't want to skew this survey.
Yeah, we, yes, mhm. Yeah, you don't want to have the same family answering five times.
Oh, a little, yeah.
Yeah. Which can happen, because people don't necessarily always know that someone else completed the survey, so. So, what I did was I tried to focus on the 25%, because that, and I do have a 50% model, but, I have two 25% models, this is an AM/PM model, so what this would do, would put remote classes in the morning for all students, they would have 45-minute classes in the morning, and then in the afternoon, we would have a different group of 25, of the 25% coming in in the afternoon for classes, does that make sense? So, so I'm gonna, we have a blue day and a white day in the high school, so we have, it rotates between the two days, so the, it would be, this would be a two-week rotation. So the first week, if I am a student and I have cla, I would, if I come into the building, if I'm in Group A, then in the morning, I would be at home doing remote classes with my teachers and everybody else who's remote, everybody would be remote in the morning. That way, every kid, whether they're in person or they're remote, will have access to that teacher, and that to me is really important. Then, in the afternoon, the kids that are not coming into the building would be doing asynchronous work, and the kids that are coming into the building would be a 25%, and those kids would go through the same schedule as what the morning was, so they would get those classes that they had in the morning twice. So they would have the same, they'd have the class in the morning remotely with everybody else, but then they would come in and they would have that same class in the afternoon in person, and the teacher would, would have to plan for that. So this is going to take some planning on the teacher's part. Yeah.
I just want to make it like more complex, since I know what the high school is like. So I actually kind of like that idea, particularly in something like, if you had AP Physics, that you could come in the afternoon and work on your labs, I, I, I pulled, you know, the small sample size one of my high school team, and asked her, like, hey, okay, so if you had to go in the building, what, where, what would you need? And I think that's kind of an interesting thing, I think, what class, if you're going to do only 25%, what classes really don't work remotely? And I, science comes to the top of my list, actually, that, that we really need to go in, and so she said the number one was banned, which wouldn't work.
Right.
But then she said, again, science was a big one, like, there's a loss, particularly, I know we keep talking about ninth graders integrating in, but the upperclassmen are taking more sophisticated science classes, trying to do it fully remotely, you lose an awful lot, and particularly kids who can invest a lot of time in AP, chemistry, biology, or physics, they, they can't get the full setup if they're doing it completely remote, so it'd be great if we could, when we think of this targeting, the group that's going to go in, how do you work that in the schedule, in the type of classes that just don't work very well remotely?
So if we did this model, we would have the kids going to all their classes, regardless if it's a science or an English or a culinary or whatever the class, world language, I was sitting in a world language class, and it's really difficult to do, to have a world language class when kids don't have their cameras on, because you're not, you can't see them speak, you can't, it's very difficult to, to watch them, and it was very interesting to, to talk to the teacher about that. So, so we would want to have all those classes, so I'm going to show you an example of what a student's schedule would look like, and then I can come back to this. So here's that same student, so they would be coming in on the blue day, they would have 45-minute classes remotely, they would travel to school, and then they would have that same schedule in the afternoon, and then on the white day, they would have 45-minute remote classes, and then they would be asynchronous for the afternoon, and then again, the blue day and the white day. It would be asynchronous in the afternoon for every single day, because there's a different group of 25% coming in in the afternoon, that's why it would be asynchronous. So teachers, as a teacher, I'm going to have a different group of kids coming in on different days, that's why it's really, really challenging to plan for curriculum this way, and I'm not going to have all my kids coming in, because not all the kids are going to want to come in, there's going to be a portion of the population that will remain remote.
So, so for the students that don't want to come in at all, all they would be getting would be that the 45-minute blocks in the morning, and then all their afternoon times would always be.
Correct, because we can't have teachers teaching remotely and in person at the same time.
So they would, they would lose, they would lose out.
There, there's a, there's time that is, there's time that is lost, total time that is lost, total contact time with teachers is lost if you go to a 25% total contact time with teachers is lost if you go to a 25% model or a 50% model. We're just going to lose the contact time. It's just a different, you have to decide what kind of contact time do we want? I mean, that's...
Which is no different than the elementary schools, loss of contact time.
But I think, I think it's more significant, well, I guess it can be argued, but it's just, you know, people are stressing about, you know, getting ready for college and all that type of thing.
I wasn't making that as a judgment. I'm just saying that in a hybrid model, regardless of whether it's middle school, elementary or high school, is a loss of contact time.
How many students are in the morning remote French III class?
Everybody. Every single student that's in that French III class.
So, typically 22.
Yep.
How many students are in that, in that in-person in the afternoon?
Great question. It depends. Depends on that alphabet group. So, we have to break it up alphabetically. We can't do it by grade level because if we, we don't have the space to accommodate a ninth-grade class with 24 kids, we can't, we don't have a room that, where they could be six feet apart. So, we would have to break it up alphabetically. There's benefits to doing it alphabetically also that, that are...
This seems really inefficient to me because it seems to me like you're going to end up with like four kids.
You could. You could end up with 10. You could end up with four. You could end up with one. You could end up with none. It's really a matter of whatever, however it breaks.
Can you use, I know we bought those fancy-smancy chairs in the end of the thing.
Yeah.
So, rather than, so, rather than, again, using the traditional classroom, particularly if you're in a non-lab thing, and particularly since we don't seem to be feeding anyone very much anymore, could you use the cafeteria and the multipurpose room as a space to spread out so you can bring more kids in?
We could use the cafeteria. We could probably use this space, possibly the upper side because this is set up. And we could use, but, yeah, I mean, the gym, we would have classes already in there because we'd have PE classes. The multipurpose room is being utilized for growing places and live and learn, so that would not be accessible.
I, I think we should keep open minds about this space and the multipurpose room. We certainly don't have, the school board does not have a monopoly on the, on the auditorium if it needs, needed for a school.
Well, I was going to say too, if it came to a choice between like our own students at the high school or live and learn...
No, those are, those are elementary kids. And we, we got a number of letters from parents saying, these are working parents and that's how they're making the hybrid work, is they are absolutely relying on being able to send those kids to that program. And, and again, to me, we also have to look at disruption, you know? And I, as much as, as much as I want to bring these kids in, I absolutely want to bring these kids in, but I don't want to make a situation worse. And if we were to say to these parents, sorry, we're, we're eliminating your program that you have absolutely relied on to be able to keep your job, you know, I mean, I just, I, I look at the disruption of that and I say, is this really worthwhile to have such a complicated schedule? Like, what is the benefit versus what is the loss?
To play the devil's advocate though, you've kind of forgotten about the working high school parents as well because they, I mean, yes, they can stay home alone, but it's still disruptive to them. And it's like, we have, I mean, I have heard from high school parents who it's not working for, I mean, again, for my sample of one, it works pretty well, but for others who it doesn't work, the remote model, and it's not that you need a 504 or that you need an IEP, the model itself is not working or keeping that kid engaged.
I get that. But if they're only coming in one day a week for, you know, one afternoon a week, it's not going to do a whole lot to eliminate a parent scheduling issue.
So, let me keep going and then maybe there's another model.
This is my understanding. So, in this model, I'm sorry, kids are in school for, on Wednes, on Monday afternoon only, is that?
No. So, this is just one student. So, he just, this particular she just happens to be in the beginning of the alphabet, so they would be on Monday. But then, a different group would be on Tuesday, doing the chemistry topics, whatever, whatever class they have.
Okay.
And a different group would be on Thursday and a different group would be on Friday. And then, the next week, this particular student already was in for a blue day, so we would make sure that that student comes in for the white day so that they would have their white day classes in person the next week. So, in a two-week rotation...
Okay, so this is, I'm sorry, I should have gotten this. This is for a student, but if you look at the utilization of the school...
Yes.
It's like Tuesday, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday and Friday.
Yep. So, if you go back here, you would see, so the AM is remote with 45-minute classes and then the PM in the building, we would have a different group of 25% in the building each day.
Okay.
And that would get us through the entire population of the students that would like to be in the building.
Okay.
It gives us, and really, it gives the teacher that face-to-face time. It's, again, you're right, it's not, it's not being in the building every day and, for 25%, but...
So, we're giving up almost half of the synchronous remote contact time to get a quarter of that in-person time.
You are giving, yes, you're giving up remote synchronous time for in-person, yep. You're giving up...
A quarter of the time you're giving up, you get back in in-person time. You're trading four minutes of, you're reducing four minutes of, of remote time for one minute of in-person time.
So, like, one of the difficulties of that is that you're treating every subject the same. You know? So, in other words, that's back to what my point was, is like, some classes work relatively well, you know, online and some don't. And we're treating all of them equal. So, it's like, okay, well, I want you to come in and do this class, which may work just fine, but I'll lose a lot of instruction time on all my other classes just because of that. And I, I, I'm not sure that's...
So, if we had a science day, we wouldn't be able to have like a science day because we wouldn't be able to accommodate all those kids in those science classrooms. So, we would have to break up all of the classes in half and then we would have to have them over a two-day period to get all of the kids, actually, it would be more than a two-day period probably to get all of the kids in their science rooms. And then, the other, the other part of that is that whatever class, I mean, if we did this, then that means that they would be missing contact time for those other classes if we just brought them in for science. Does that make sense? So, again, even if we just bring them in for a specific class, you're, you'd have to make a decision about which classes do you want to have more contact time with those teachers and you're taking it from some other place to get that contact time. So, are you going to, what classes are we going to take that time from?
Let's see the next model, Suzanne.
Unless we're going to completely redo the schedule, if we stick with the choice model, I don't know how you don't treat all the subjects the same though, too.
You've, that one?
So, the next one would be doing it over a two-day period. So, you'd have 25% in the morning on Monday, 25 on the afternoon, and then you'd do the 25 in the morning on Tuesday and 25 in the afternoon on, in the afternoon on Tuesday. And then, people that weren't in the building would be working asynchronously because, again, we can't have teachers teaching remotely and teaching in person at the same time. So, if you aren't in the building, then that means you're working asynchronously for those days.
When you say 25%, are you shooting for 25% of the whole building census or 25% in each classroom or what?
So, when I started doing the models, I don't, I don't have all the data to know what that 25% is yet. So, I can get, you know, hopefully, next week, I'll have a better understanding of what that is and maybe it wouldn't be, maybe we could do it over a two-day period depending on the number of kids that are interested in coming in. But right, right now, I'm thinking 25% of the full population. So, if we have 840 kids, we're talking about 25% of the 840 kids.
It seems like there ought to be, it seems like there ought to be a way to slice that differently, especially for the freshmen and sophomores, to not create so much asynchronous time.
So, the teachers that teach the freshmen and sophomores also teach the juniors and seniors. So, of the, it's a, it's around, it's a little over 100 fresh, there are about, a little over 100 classes that freshmen take. If we take the whole population of freshmen, there's around 100 actual physical classes that those kids go in. More than half of those classes around, and I, I'm trying to remember what it is. It's around 68-ish classes. They have other kids in other grades in those classes. So, if I am a freshman, I, I'm not just taking classes with freshmen, I'm taking classes with other grade levels and those teachers are teaching kids of all grade levels. I don't, I, I have very, I think I have one teacher that teaches just freshmen and that's it. Yeah.
To Al's point about particular classes just being much richer in person, I wonder what it would look like. This isn't well thought through, but to have, to shrink slightly the times for that sort of morning block and then the block one, block two, and then have optional mid to later afternoon labs or that sort of thing so that you're not turning block number two into fully asynchronous, but you're having times where students come in later in the, in the day to do additional work. It would mean that your science class got more real estate than other classes, but maybe that's, you know, that's one of the trade-offs that we make.
So, we could do something like that. That's, that was one of the things I talked about a while, a while ago. It's kind of like an in-person flexible model where you have people coming in at flexible times. The transportation around that, we'd, I'm not sure how that would work. That was one of the things that we were debating about. And then, supervision, if we have to have kids in, if we have to utilize transportation over a period of time, we have to be able to supervise those kids over that period. So, those are just challenges. It doesn't mean it's, it's not possible. They're just challenges we'd have to work with to look at something like that. And I can pursue that if that's something you'd like for me to do, to pursue what it could look like, to have specific classes in, in the afternoon like that and, and change the timeframe of the other...
Suzanne, just for clarification, the times that you have up here, have they been worked through with Lisa at this point?
No, so, so...
So, these are suggested, not actual?
These are suggested times, yes. I don't have specific times yet because I, I need to sit down with Lisa and go through the logistics of that.
Historically, what percentage of high schoolers have been able to, to, don't need transport?
Historically, if we were in normal times, about 40% of the high school is transported on the bus. Right now, we're around 60 students, but that's based on the current model that Suzanne has. If we go to a different model, we would expect that that would go up somewhat, but largely the seniors and most of the juniors are driving themselves. So, historically, the bus participation is relatively low, but it's not really about the high school. It's about making sure that we can service the elementary and middle school. And, and so, it, the elementary and middle school will drive the bus because that's where most of the kids are.
I had a question about, I wonder if the people who said that they weren't going to send their kids into, you know, either model 25 or 50% assumed that they would have remote access to their teachers similar to what they have now? And I'm wondering how realistic that is, the assumption, because once you start using your teachers, I mean, I mean, for in-school teaching, then it disrupts the opportunity to have, you know, to have that, that, you know, that remote model similar to what they have now. Am I wrong on that?
Yeah. So, that information was not part of the survey. I just wanted to know.
I'm not, I'm not questioning it because I'm just wondering whether, once you realize that, that this is going to be disrupted, whether that might change people's decisions about whether they want to come in.
I think it goes right back to Michael's observation about what you're trading, four minutes for one minute. I think that once these models are more fleshed out and the parents see them, that trade-off may be just something that people aren't willing to, to do because it is a disproportionate trade-off.
But if you look at this, either this or the previous one, the difference between a full remote and a, as much as possible in the building student is only three hours a week in the building. So, it's not, it's 10% of the whole, the whole academic week. It's not a...
You're still mostly remote.
I think if my concern was, was medical, then I would be saying those three hours are not what tips the balance.
So, I have a 50% model. Would you like to see that?
Sure.
Okay. So, there, this is the 50% model that is, it's similar to the 25% where it's AM and PM, but it has the A group and the B group would be coming in more frequently. So, you have all the kids, again, doing remote classes in the morning and that way, every single student, regardless if they're remote or if they're in person, they can access their teachers. If the kid, if you are in a Group A, then you would be coming two days a week on a, one on a blue day and one on a white day. And if you're in Group B, you would be coming two days a week. And so, you'd be accessing your teachers more frequently in that model.
Is it safe to say that because it's alphabetical and average, that there would be some classes that are significantly higher than 50% as well as some are lower?
So, we went through and, through all of the classes and divided it up alphabetically. There's a few classes that are off of the 50% and we'd either have to find another location for them or move some kids off of their alphabet split. We'd have to work with parents on that.
This makes, to me, makes a lot more sense if it's workable. I, I, the 25%, it just doesn't, the trade-off just doesn't seem worth it. This one seems more reasonable to me if we can make it work.
So, this is what it would mean time-wise for kids. So, this is that same student. So, they would be coming in if they were going to be in person. Remote learners would have classes four days a week with a total of 90 minutes per class. So, again, every time you're pulling kids into the building and you're having teachers teach in person, you're pulling them away from the remote learners. And so, that's, that would be the impact. They would have access. And then, obviously, on Wednesdays, they would have the office hours time. But this means that the teachers in the afternoon would not be available.
Just an observation from last year. Suzanne, you know, last year's model was largely an asynchronous model and it was something that we got a lot of feedback from parents, which is why we changed the model to a much more structured model for this school year. I was wondering, you know, when we get to asynchronous learners for remote students, whether that's a disservice to those kids?
Yeah. And I can't answer that. I don't, I don't know. You know, I think all, all kids are a little different. I can say that as, as a principal, I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the kids that are at home working on their own for the afternoon and not being able to access their teachers for support or help. And if, and if I, if I am a student and I have French III and I struggle in that class, that means that I'm going to meet with my teacher on Monday and maybe see them on Wednesday if I can make some time to meet with them on Wednesday, but I really won't have class with them again until Thursday. So, that, to me, I would be a little, that, that makes me nervous. I don't, I don't know if that's, I'm concerned about that for that student.
It's a lot more like the V-Lax model.
So, could you, I don't know if this would work, probably not, but it, could you reverse it so that instead of having the same class, that would maybe be, would work, but instead of having, okay, they're, they have their remote, like, blue day schedule in the morning and then they're coming in and having those same classes in the afternoon, like, if you swapped it out so that they had, they came in the afternoon on the white day and had those classes, you know what I'm saying? Like, so, so then they would have a remote French III on Monday and in-person French III on Tuesday.
So, your afternoon, your morning and your afternoon would be different colors.
Right. Exactly. That's, that's what it is. So, you'd have a blue-white morning and a blue-white afternoon. Yeah, exactly.
Yep. That's something we could look at. I, I don't know, from a teacher's perspective, that would be challenging to plan, but not impossible. So, I think that that would be, we could definitely look at that.
Also, all eight classes in a day instead of kind of blocked?
That's true, too. You're, you're right about that, yeah.
I had asked earlier about if we could find emergency funding for this emergency year, what sort of thing would be helpful? And I'm wondering if almost a, you know, a teacher's assistant or someone to help with the asynchronous part of the time, whether that's even feasible would be helpful.
I don't know if that would be helpful. I think the challenge for us at the high school really is the... I think the challenge for us at the high school really is the, is that once you bring kids into the building, which is what we want, you're pulling those teachers away from the kids that are at home. And so it's this really tricky balance. And so I think that that, I don't, I, you know, you asked that question. I don't think people necessarily would help with this. I think it's really a structural thing that is, that makes this very challenging for the high school.
I know we've committed to our teachers that we wouldn't require any of them to teach in-person and remotely at the same time. But if they wanted to, let's say that Algebra II teacher on Monday afternoon wanted to teach remotely and in-person, did they offer that to their asynchronous students as well?
I would defer that to Dr. Morris and the, and the Teachers Guild to answer that question.
I have floated the question with Guild leadership, Michael, and, and I will put it out to the students before, to the teachers before next week. So we have that data.
I think that if that was the case, I would do a completely different model. I think I'd propose something totally different than what you see here.
Well, you won't have all the teachers wanting to do that anyhow.
No, I think that if, if teachers could do that though, if teachers could teach remotely and in-person at the same time, then I think that you could do something very different than this.
Yeah, and I think there are some classes that would be suited to that and some that would clearly not be.
Would it be possible to have during the asynchronous time, have access, I'm thinking I'd like to, to, to students who might be tutoring, or there might be certain people that you could check into, or, you know, even former teachers who would volunteer to spend some time as, you know, who, who know the subject, so that you could have somebody to check in, you know, if you had, if you had trouble or, you know?
Yep, we could definitely look at that. We have NHS and, and other student tutors, peer tutoring occurring right now. And so we could continue to look at that as an option. We also, we also could look at teacher duties and having, seeing if there are teachers within departments where their duty could be during this time period where they could be supporting kids. But it's going to be tricky because all of the teachers are going to be in the building possibly teaching class. So we'd have, we'd have to look and see who has a prep and who can, who can do that.
Oh yeah, that brings up, that does bring up another point. How many faculty members or, you know, faculty staff members do you have at the high school that are not, are going to have to stay remote?
We have, only have a few, and so we would just be, we would have to have that person streaming into the classroom and have an adult there, and we would, we'd have to work on that.
We have four, Denise.
Okay. So much more workable at the high school than at the middle school?
Much more, but the, the issue at the high school is the age of the teachers. And instead of illness being a factor, I think it's childcare that'll be a factor.
Seems of the families that want to go back, there is both the, sort of the isolation and mental health and social-emotional side. And then there's the classes where it's just so much more powerful to have it in-person. And it feels like the models, like, like Denise, I think the 50% model that you show here just feels much more worth a potential change. And that's, that hits the criteria of, you know, all students in, meeting teachers in every single subject and sort of having the structure that, that Tom talked about for the middle school. I think the alternative, if the emphasis were on the classes that were most effective in-person, might be, as I mentioned earlier, to just shave off even 10 minutes for each of the morning and block one and block two, and then have for some of those classes the ability to, you know, to schedule a 25 or 50% day where students could come in for, you know, for a particular lab or a particular learning. And it would, you know, it would be a decision to not say that all classes are cookie cutter, that, you know, that some classes are going to be getting a little bit more this year because of the conditions. So I think it's interesting to consider those two priorities.
I can definitely bring a model to you that would, that could be reflective of what, of what you just said.
Questions?
So I think we talked about, I think we talked about all these, I don't need to go over all of them.
Thank you, Suzanne.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Were there, were there pictures there?
There were pictures, do you want to see some of the, so these, so this classroom right here is a math classroom, and you can't really see very well, but you can see there's actual desks that have X's on them. So we've taped desks off. This is a room that is a table room. We can have about 10 kids in a class, these are tower, the tower, this is where we've had most of our students. Ooh, I don't know what just happened there, but, ah, sorry about that, I don't know what just happened.
Rocket!
Ah, I don't have any idea what just happened there. Oh, now it's, now it's back, now it's not back. But, so our tower classrooms, because of the number of desks, we don't have anywhere to put them. So we just put X's over them and block them off and kind of push them off to the side or leave them in a, as an empty row. And then the rooms with, with tables, they all have there. But the cafeteria, if you, if you've, I don't know if you've walked past it, but you can see the cafeteria is all separated, all of the tables are separated and they have a single chair. Some of them have shields. And we have, I think it's 94 tables in there, so we're able to have about 94 kids in there at, each at their own table. Not every table has a shield, but most of them do.
Suzanne, just before you sit down, can you talk to the behavior of the high school kids when you've had them in masks, when you've had all of the seniors or all of the freshmen or most?
Sure, so we've had to remind kids about masks, I think that that's pretty normal. I think that mask, wearing a mask all day, which is one of the reasons why I have half-day models, is really challenging, it's challenging for adults and for kids. And so we've had, we've had a few cases, but the kids, you just, if you redirect them, they put them back on. Social distancing, I think, is the hardest thing because they just are creatures of gathering and they like to gather and they like to talk to each other. And so I think that is the biggest challenge, is to remind them to remain socially distant.
Is that in the cores, where they're always?
The cores are closed off, it's, it's, the hallways are divided, but they find, you know, today we saw some kids walking right next to each other because they hadn't seen each other in a while and they were walking and talking, and I think it's just a, it's just human nature to, to do that. So we have to remind them, you know, stay socially distanced and, but the masks are less of, we've had fewer issues with masks than we have with social distancing.
Suzanne, it reminds me of, you know, Up the Down Staircase, the movie, where everybody in the schools were put in lockstep with arrows and singles filed staircase and no touching. You know, the, the old dance, you had to have your arms distant, it's just, some of this is a throwback to, you know, a period of my youth.
Was that nostalgic moment?
Your youth too, Tom.
The multipurpose room is being used for live and learn?
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
The multipurpose room, we're using for both live and learn in growing places, largely because the elementary schools couldn't host them. And so, you know, they provide a valuable community service, not just to, you know, the parents, working parents that Al alluded to, but also they've taken on the responsibility for some of our young parents, employees. So, you know, like Denise said, this is an incredibly valuable service to our working families, but also to our own working, workers. And it's a great program. Both programs have been generational at this point in the district and in many ways are seen as an extension of us, even though they're not. And so it was, I thought it was really important that we support that effort in order to help our working parents.
Before we move off of the, of the high school, so how mu, is that an all-day thing? And how many students are in there typically?
All day.
It's all day.
And the number of kids in that space?
Ah, I don't know how many students they're serving right now, I have to, I have to find out.
I would say it's a goodly number, Michael, because there's lots of little people running all over the place with their masks on.
And I believe I read in one of the comments that it's full, like, there might be a waiting list even to get in, because I believe that was in some of the letters that we received.
Absolutely the case.
Could we take just a three or four minute break now? Is that right? Thanks.
Yes. Okay, David, in this week, take us away.
You saved the best for last, thank you. So this is the elementary update. We also, much like Suzanne, put all the different phases that we considered originally up. And the one highlighted is the phase that the board chose and that we have been implementing. So we have been in our AMPM hybrid model. And then, of course, our fully remote model that the families chose. This shows you the numbers of where we're at with Mohairat and Mass Way. Our numbers are more comparable than they have been, I feel like. Two-thirds of our children are in, granted, half at a time, so half in the morning and half in the afternoon. And then a third of our students are remote. So you can see our numbers there. We thought we'd share a little data about transportation as well as food services. And we just made a note there, about six-foot distancing is in place. It is a constant work in progress, much like Suzanne said, with students. The littles, the little heinies scoot in the desk and we got to regroup every day and put everybody back in their places, but we're always just remeasuring and they're precious. You will see them walking down the hall with their airplane arms. They work very hard to six-foot distance. And they're doing a fantastic job at wearing their masks. So we're very proud of the kids. So, so far, so good, we are open for business. Students seem happy. I will share that I think they are a little more subdued. Teachers will share how they're quieter. You know, it's, it's a little strange sometimes in the classroom because there's only seven or eight kids in a classroom. So at times, they are a little, it's strange. I mean, you're spaced out and you can't leave your desk, it's just, it's a different feeling. I feel like their personalities aren't quite as bubbly in the classroom setting, but they are happy to be at school. Again, they're wearing their masks well. Arrival and dismissal at Mass Way is going great. We have had some bumps, in all honesty, so we're living and learning a lot and reflecting and adjusting as needed. Breakfast and lunch in person, our numbers are, they're low as far as in-person. There's quite a few that are being packed and are going home on the buses for afternoon lunches or in the afternoon going home for breakfast. So it's, it's good to see kids in the cafeteria, but the numbers are pretty low. Orientation went well, honesty personally, I feel like it went a little long. If we could relive it at the elementary level, I don't know that we needed as much time as we took. But it did allow routines to be made, relationships to be built. There was a lot that now goes into, you know, the children are entering the building in different locations to minimize hall, hall traffic. So orientation helped with that, data gathering was really great. So there were many positives to orientation, I don't, I don't want to spin that as though it wasn't, but it felt like it went on a really long time. We both have some COVID data. I'll give you a minute to look at Mohairat, and if you have any questions for David. Again, our, our COVID data is really pretty neck and neck considering. And it's gone really, really, really well. Our staff is very cognizant to try to be sure that they are meeting the strict guidelines. I believe our parents are as well. We, we remind each other when we get worried about things like six-foot or this or that, that we have a building full of healthy kids, not sick kids. So we have to remind ourselves of that, that we're, we're not letting anybody in that's sick. And if we find out they're sick, they're sent home. So our numbers have really, they're very positive, really.
Are you in cohorts right now?
Yes, all of our kids are cohorting, definitely. And we work hard to make sure that stays implemented, regardless if it's a unified arts class. regardless if it's a unified arts class, how they're entering and exiting.
I found that made a, a huge difference in the, between shutting down an entire school and quarantining just a group of kids.
Yeah, so if we did have an um event, if you will, I am hoping that it would be just, just the people who were tracking, so that we could track and know. We work very closely with our school nurses on gathering this data, communicating with one another. Uh, weekends can get interesting. Seems like everything happens on a weekend. So we wanna make sure we know what we're walking into on Monday, whether that's students or staff. Um, I guess that's just Murphy's Law.
Misty, I think you're the, um, I think you're the only school that has had a, an adult have to go home and teach from home remotely into the classroom. Can you speak to that experience, how you cover the class and how it's going?
Yes, so we have one staff member who is um isolating at home, uh, out of an abundance of caution. And it's gone really well. She remotes in, she teaches remotely, and we have a substitute in the classroom. She does have some of her own children at home who are also working remotely. So a couple of days, the sub has been like a typical sub for part of the day, and she's remoted in for part of the day. But it's been a really cool sort of test to see how that works. I, I, I'd like, if we do have to have anybody else out for a long period of time, I'd love for that model to continue, where there could be an adult in the classroom for supervision, but the teacher is still providing the instruction over the Promethean Board.
What's been the parent feedback on that, Misty?
Parent feedback is good. They're rumor mills, as you can imagine. So again, we're living and learning. I did not initially send out full parent communication because I, I, I just initially wanted to protect her privacy, and I didn't wanna hint if it was a, a normal illness, or COVID, or whatever. I just wanted to keep it, you know, private. So then the kids got wind and thought that it was worse than it was. So then I did send out parent communication to make sure all the parents knew your children were never at a health risk. And I just wanna make sure that, that they knew that. So in hindsight, I probably would've sent that out sooner.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Staff update. So there's a lot of positives with the staff. I think I mentioned at our last board meeting, some of the silver linings is the amount of collaboration between our classroom teachers, not just at grade-level teams, but across schools. Curriculum remapping, a lot of talk about um curriculum, you know, compacting the curriculum. We had meetings today because it's a Wednesday and did some curriculum work, and talked a lot about what math modular are you on, and what are you on? And regardless if you're remote, or if you're in-person, we wanted to be sure that we're trying to um pace similarly, so that if we do ever have to pivot, that we are, our kids wouldn't have a really different experience. Or if we had an opportunity where children were able to come in more, that they wouldn't have had a really different experience in a high, in a remote class versus coming in and joining a hybrid class. New teaching models. Uh, our teachers are, they're doing their jobs very, very differently than they ever have before. I can't, I really can't emphasize that enough, that the way they're teaching is, um, it, it's different. They're trying to use every minute that they can of the shortened day that they have kids in-person. They're working really hard to make sure they're sending a quality amount of work home to continue that school day at home. And then our fully remote teachers have their children, their students, all day. A lot of tech integration. Again, it's a silver lining in some ways. My tech integrator is thrilled. She gets so much PD time with teachers now that she used to beg for. So everybody wants it now, and that's great. They're learning a lot. Um, so those new teaching models. I think I covered that next one, too. Teachers are phenomenal about being responsive to student and family needs. That was really one of the things I think we did quite well also in the spring, is that um our counselors, our teachers, our school psychologists, myself, our interventionists, special educators, we're small enough that we are all on the same page, knew who, know who our kids are, that we have concern, and make sure that we're putting extra supports in place as needed for those families. Some concerns. Yes, as you know, and you have talked about the survey, the increase of staff is definitely a concern. The increase of workload is definitely a concern. I know we have another slide on Wednesday, but I can't say enough that how, what an impact it would be if we changed the way we're doing Wednesdays. Um, there is a lot of hard work that goes into Wednesdays, and a lot of work that gets done that I don't know how we would do on the other four days. And I'm not sure how to articulate strongly enough that the work our teachers are doing right now is very different. I'm very proud of the work that they do. It's very impressive, but it is different. And it is um more work in many ways, and they're doing, they're doing their job so differently. Workload increases, impact staff. David likes to talk about the five schools. Um, it's funny, I honestly, when he and I, when we talk, I, I didn't, it didn't come to my mind as five schools initially, but uh it's an interesting, you do have your students that are, you're planning for and instructing in-person, and then you have to be sure that you've planned that you're sending home a quality AM or PM at-home learning, students that are fully remote. We do have our Wednesday work. Service providers, special educators, unified arts teachers, they're the ones that are doing both hybrid and remote, and that's a lot. Our librarian, for example, she's doing, at least at Mass Way, she's doing her teaching schedule for in-person and fully remote students, as well as the circulation desk, which is a different system for remote students than it is for in-person. So again, it's a lot of moving parts.
Um, this is more information about what goes on on Wednesdays when students are at home. Um, and to, to echo what Misty says, it really is, everything that our teachers are doing is different than what they've done in the past. Um, it's not, it's not correct to think that I was an in-school teacher for a full day when I was personally a teacher. And now if I had to do it in the hybrid model, I would simply do it in the morning and then in the afternoon. It is completely different. And we'll talk a little bit about what that is in a moment. But in order to be able to provide the kind of experiences and the level of instruction that we, as an Oyster River District, expect of our teachers, and for our students, they need time to do a tremendous amount of work. In addition, the, a number of meetings and the number of, uh, the number of meetings and the amount of work that goes into collaborating and creating the models, the MTSS models that we have, the supports we provide for students, in a normal school year, when we do that, we pull teachers out of the classroom, and we cover them with other staff in the building. And to go to your question about cohorting, we can't do that this year. So if all of third grade needs to go to have a meeting, we put different adults into all the third-grade classrooms. We've now mixed their cohorts with more adults. And as those adults then go cover other rooms, we've now mixed those adults into other cohorts. And so then we would potentially get into situations where we have to shut down far more of the building than we would want. So it's also gone into how we've scheduled our Encore UA classes, um, so that being able to pull people out of their classrooms to do business during the school day is not possible. And so we need to do that on Wednesday. So on Wednesdays, here's a snapshot of things that happen. There is a huge amount of curriculum work going on. We've, you've, as a body, have asked those questions before. There is no rulebook from the state, or from the standards, Common Core standards, or Next Gen standards, that says, in a hybrid model, these are the standards that you should focus on. Every school district has to make those decisions on their own, and our teachers, in their incredible expertise, make those decisions knowing what comes before them, and what comes after them, and what their current students need. And they do that work together. And they have to do it with pacing between hybrid classes and remote classes, because we might all be remote. We might have students transfer back and forth, and we work collaboratively. So they're constantly making adjustments with their curriculum. We have all of our MTSS meetings, all of our special education meetings. And then, as Misty has said, the collaboration has even increased. So now we have grade levels who are asking to meet across the two buildings, much more than before, because of the collaboration and the sharing that's going on, to make sure that they can support each other in the workload, and also we can have some great efficiencies with our, with our students and our teachers. And then there's a huge amount of professional development. Every technological platform that we're trying to use needs to be learned, and not just learned on the surface level, but the more deeply a teacher can understand it, the more they can think creatively about how they're going to teach, because they can understand how to deeply use it. And so they're meeting as grade levels. They're meeting one-on-one. They're meeting in small groups with our tech integrators. They're doing all of the other PD that's part of our strategic plan as well, equity and inclusion work, social-emotional learning, professional development, and they're learning more about remote teaching strategies as well. Most of the research out there, and most of the writing, when you read into these articles, all about remote teaching strategies, they focus on high school and middle school. And translating that into an elementary experience is very, very challenging. We have, uh, on Wednesdays for students, as you can see, our parent educators are working with students. They are meeting uh on scheduled team calls with students to support their executive functioning, their schedule, their plan, continuing to practice some of the skills they might need throughout the week. And then this hybrid teams practice, we've had some staff who are working with hybrid students to practice being on teams, to prepare for if they have to be remote. And one of the staff who was doing that, she said, I did that with fourth grade, and, you know, I had this experience. And then I went to third grade, and it was night and day. Like, the difference between fourth graders and third graders, and their independence, and their ability to be on teams is drastically different. And then you translate that to second, first, and kindergarten. It's hard to explain how challenging these things are at these ages compared to middle school and high school. And so there's just a huge amount of work that we're doing to be able to then provide for families what we're providing already, and preparing to continue it as we go.
David, I have a quick question. Um, it, the idea of a day each week for the teachers to do what they need to do, um, it absolutely makes sense. I think we can do a better job at communicating that. Why Wednesdays instead of Fridays? I've heard from some families that it's really hard to, you get in the swing on Monday, Tuesday, and then Wednesday's this black hole, and you have to rouse again for Thursday, Friday. And, you know, the idea of perhaps having what feels like a three-day weekend, a Friday, Saturday, Sunday, uh, might feel more natural for families.
We, we've had a lot of conversations about that. We had a lot of those conversations this summer as a district when we were making choices. Last spring, we had started with a, a Friday as a, a day for catch-up throughout the district. Um, and that was really a district collaborative discussion about the day, and not changing days between different models. We also have experienced that when it's a Friday, there, the engagement goes down with the work that's being provided on that Friday in some places. So there's an issue of uh families making choices for, say, a three-day weekend, uh, differently than if it's a Wednesday. I'm not suggesting that the work that's happening at home is easy on a Wednesday. Um, and again, it comes back to this idea that we didn't stand up here this summer and say, this is an awesome model that we wanna do instead of the regular school model. We're doing, providing the very best model we can, given all of our circumstances, and we need to have a day to do this work. Um, so I understand that the experience at home for many families on whatever that day is, is challenging. But um, moving it to Friday now would impact a huge host of schedules already, daycare, plans for kids. Um, that's just not something we've explored yet. I'm not arguing with you that we shouldn't. I'm just saying we haven't, we haven't explored that yet. Denise?
Yeah, and I would, I would say that, again, from the comments, particularly from teachers, is that it's just that break in the middle of the week allows them to kinda catch their breath. And, and yeah, we, we heard how it wasn't as um you, utilized on Fridays as the Wednesdays. That, the comments that I've seen have, it's been a different type of, you know, we haven't heard those same complaints about it as when it was on a Friday, and people were saying, this really doesn't feel like a, a useful day. I mean, there's still some of that, but it, it does seem like it's, it's better utilized. Um, my question is the same one that I asked Jay earlier, as far as the special education, because it does seem at the elementary level that there were a number of comments um from staff, again, about, you know, trying to support students remotely and in-person, and just, I'm questioning, you know, do you have enough staff to support our special needs students in, in this, at least in this model that we have going right now?
I don't think Misty and I can speak highly enough of our special education department. It's taken until pretty much now to make the schedules for all of our students. Special education, I would add tutors, um, counseling, anybody who receives a service. And to continue with our cohorting, the majority of those services are remote. So you have, you're, you're in the building, but you're working with students who are at home in the opposite session. And what you could've done in a small group, you're now doing individually. People's schedules are very complicated. And as a district, we're not a one-size-fits-all, here's what we have for you, take it or leave it kind of district, right? We, we believe in providing as much as we can for each individual family. And so our families and our staff are working together to make schedules that work for everybody. And that takes a long time. There've been a lot of changes and a lot of modifications. All of our students are, who have need, are having their needs met. And I would add, I, I don't wanna steal Catherine's thunder, but the, the comp ed meetings that we've been doing speak to that. Um, every, we've been providing for our students very well. It is a huge amount of work. Um, it, it's an enormous amount of work.
You, you've cited cohorting as a limiting factor for um why we need Wednesdays, by we can't pull teachers out of classrooms during the week, and as a limiting factor for how special ed services are delivered. So in your mind, what's the definition of a cohort? What's the largest, what are, what are, what are the boundaries on a cohort?
Well, it's ill-defined, Michael. We, we try to have it be as small as possible. At the same time, we have to run a school. And we have situations where um somebody has, has a service that is best done in person. And so that cohort changes. But we've put uh health guideline, guidelines in place to remove those kinds of situations from the general cohort as much as possible. So for example, if we have a classroom that's empty because that teacher is remote, and we have students in the class next to it who need service in person, we can pull them into the class next door. So they're working with that provider, six feet, masks, the whole thing, uh, but not in the group next door. So as much minimizing as we can of those types of experiences, if it's gonna be more than 10 minutes, and it's gonna be in close proximity, um, that we can do, we do. But I don't have a, I can't tell you there's a specific number that a cohort is considered, say, 15, and no child shall move out of that. We, we do it on a case-by-case, grade-by-grade, class-by-class.
Yeah, I, I think the ability to know who's had contact with who is absolutely essential, but I think it also sounds like maybe we're being a little bit overly restrictive in how we utilize the building and the staff because of that.
I, I, I don't know. I, I, I think we have the comfort level of families sending their kids to school, the comfort level of our staff working in the building, who, uh, and all of that. It, it's a fascinating mix. It really is. And I'm sure we could continuously reflect on it and, and make changes. Um, we, we just have to talk it through.
I, I'd just like to say, um, and I think this is probably almost, I'm sure you understand it, but how grateful we are that you, you folks took the step. I mean, we asked you to do it, but I mean, you, you took that step to, to create this hybrid model. I know how hard that must've been, and how the anxiety that you had to deal with probably yourselves and with your teachers to, to move in that. And I just, I think we should just thank you for taking that step. I, because I know it wasn't easy.
Well, we, the two of us did not do it alone, Tom. And, and so we really just need to really acknowledge the huge amount of work that the transition teams and all of our teachers did, either on the transition teams or in their curriculum meetings to make this possible. Um, it, it was a big deal, for sure. And there was a, there was an enorm, I am thinking about, you know, middle school, high school, the discussions you're having. We, we had a, a number of days where we still had staff who hadn't been as involved as we had been deeply entrenched throughout the summer, which is obvious. There's no criticism of any staff member. And so when we came back to school, we had a lot of work as a community of adults to understand the models, the guidelines, to feel comfortable. It, and it didn't just finish on day one. You know, we've continued to talk with staff and to work through those things as we've gone throughout the fall. Um, because this to work through those things as we've gone throughout the fall, because this is nerve-wracking in many ways. And so I, there's been a ton of work, and our staff have been supporting each other really well.
My, my other question would be, and this gets to the issue that we're going to have to decide next week, it would seem to me that there's an argument for maintaining the system that you have now, I mean, you're doing, you may have, I'm sure you have like tweaks and revisions.
We're going to make just that argument in a minute or two.
Okay, well, I don't know, you know, it's, you want to get, I mean, I'm sure you have other things to say, but I mean, that's kind of the decision, or the non-decision that we have to be making, so.
Yep. That's exactly, that's exactly right. There have been discussions about remote learning, what it looks like for the third of our students and families who chose remote learning. This is an example of a schedule, they're not all exactly the same, we wouldn't want them to be exactly the same, they should be different from kindergarten to fourth grade, and frankly, they might even be different within a grade level across the two buildings because of different ideas and the uniqueness of our teachers and their expertise. But this is an example of two days, so you can see that on one day they might have an encore UA class, on another, on another day they wouldn't. Their ELA, their literacy work and their math work is broken up into groups. The research that we've been reading and that we've been investigating around remote learning, especially at this age, is that shorter, more concise, focused, remote learning is more effective than a traditional brick-and-mortar experience. We don't take a, you know, a 60-minute math experience from the classroom and make it into a 60-minute live session on Teams with six-year-olds or seven-year-olds. I've had the joy of joining some of our reading groups on Teams over the past few weeks, and it's been the reading specialist and two students and myself, and just watching that 20-minute experience with two students to do one reading book is proof enough that you don't do a 60-minute math lesson on Teams with eight-year-olds. And so by breaking it up this way, we have teachers doing very targeted, specific instructions, and then the students, of course, are working at home independently around those lifetimes, and then they're able to check back in with their teachers.
Is there a group that's actually starting at 8:30?
Yeah. Are there team morning meetings at 8:30? Yes.
I thought everybody was starting at nine.
The remote days, it varies, to be honest, for our remote instructors than in comparison to our hybrid. It is nine, you are correct, for our in-person kiddos because of transportation.
And what's not overlaid on this is the service schedule for the students who'd be in that class. And at every single time that's not a student's time, so like during literacy group one, there are students who aren't in literacy group one, some of them are having services and some are not, but it is a web of schedules for, for students in the classes.
And also, I just want to note a very important balance, because we did not want our students that have the most challenging learning needs to have to endure more of the instruction, you know, if they're getting, what they're getting from their teacher and then their interventionist, it becomes exhausting, so we have to balance that we're doing what's best for the kids.
And then, as we also know, across our community, the opinions about screen time vary greatly. Even in families who chose remote learning, that did not mean that every family who chose remote learning was signing on to a full day on the computer. We, many families chose remote learning for many other reasons that are all exceptionally valid, and so how much screen time, how much independence does the child have, all of that goes into the mix of how our teachers at those grade levels and at those classes are defining their day. Tom sort of beat us to the punch of this question about what do we do next? And in order to be able to talk about what we do next, we have to talk a little bit about the size of our classrooms in terms of kids in there. We have said that we can fit 12 students in a classroom, and that's true based on the six-foot distancing. And we made those decisions this summer. And about a week into our hybrid model, it was very obvious that even though we can fit 12 into the classroom, that is not the best instructional model, that's not the number we would choose if we were going and making our decisions based on the best instruction we can offer. And that's because we can't offer our instruction in the ways that we used to do it. So you see, we can't have students in pods, we're not able to do small group instruction, we can't take five kids and put them around a small kidney table and instruct them while the other kids are at centers because we have to keep our six-foot distancing. We can't do partner work. So it's much more whole class or one-on-one. And in a classroom of eight-year-olds, to have 12 kids at their desks and the teacher going around and doing that individual one-on-one work is, is very challenging.
It's probably a challenge for you to even envision, because they're not even sharing materials. All the children have their own individualized learning kits, and everything's being cleaned in between, like, all the nuances of pulling this off is quite incredible.
We also think there's another discussion to be had about class size as it relates to the policy that the school board has, IIB, about class size in general. So even though it's 12 in a cohort, and I was definitely guilty of this over the summertime, I mean, I was an elementary school teacher for 16 years, and I thought, wow, 12 in a session, so different than I taught 28 at one point. But 12 in a session is so fundamentally different than what I experienced during the normal times. And then to have 12 in both sessions is, of course, 24 students. It's still 24 students you're thinking about, it's still 24 conferences, it's still 24 progress reports, it's more IEP meetings, it's all of those sorts of things. And that number is above our class size numbers K through 3, given that we have a plus-two window, right? So in kindergarten, it's 18, in first, second, and third grade, it's a class size of 20, we have a plus-two for that, so we could get up to 22, which is 11, not the 24 of 12. So it's, it's all in our minds as we're really, as we're living this model, what does that mean for us? And as you've alluded, a major change would be really disruptive. Our service schedules have taken an exceptionally long time to, to get correct and, and to be responsive to our families' needs. We would have to really talk about, are we just putting 12 in the room for each session because we can? Or are we trying to maximize the type of instruction that we're giving for these age groups? We do have.
How many, how many classes have 12?
At Moheram, at third grade is full, and then we have many classes at 11, and we have a session here or there at 12. And so we have between one and four open seats in, in most classrooms. Some of our remote classes, we would argue are full. We've never set a remote class size ceiling as a group, but we would argue that's full. So we would really need to survey families and see, remembering that families made a choice for hybrid or remote. We didn't force them into that, that was a choice, and a third of our families chose remote, and two-thirds chose hybrid. So surveying them to see who would want to change would, would be our first step to see. But then, we have to think about all these issues. We were able to provide choice for an AM or a PM session. I think it's safe to say to every family who we talked about, who we talked to prior to the start of school, we can't guarantee that we could provide families that choice necessarily if we were able to offer them a change from remote to hybrid, because we have classes that are already established. We would have to decide what we're doing about class size numbers. If a grade is full and a family wants to switch, would we send them to the other school if there's space there? And then what does that mean for this year, what does that mean for transportation, what does that mean for the future? Those would all be things that we simply would, would need to talk about.
So there is no plus-two margin limit in the policy?
That's correct. That was a, that, that is correct, there's no plus-two.
We use plus-two if we were getting to a place where we felt like we needed to come and recommend additional staffing to you as a school board.
But that's not a policy limit.
I'm sorry that I said that incorrectly.
Yeah, yeah.
So if, if you had a few openings in a class and giving a choice each quarter, so if, if a parent said, hey, this remote's not working, would like to come in, at this point, would you accommodate them to bring them in if there's space in that grade?
It depends on the grade and what we say of if there's space. So if there's a fourth grade class that has 11 in both sessions, if we say there's space for one in each, because that's the 12 for the limit, we can also argue that right now 11 is a lot in that class for the type of instructional experience that we want our students to have. And in a kindergarten class that has nine, we could say there's four spaces, three spaces, that would even be better math, but we might say, wow, in kindergarten, nine is the limit for the best instructional experience we can give our kindergarteners. On day one, our kindergarteners were sitting in their seats and they didn't move, and it was terrible. And we very quickly realized, wow, how do we put into place some of the other things that happen in kindergarten with our health guidelines so that they can do parallel play, small things in other spaces? If we were to fill the room with, to 12, we would lose a lot of the pieces, for example, in kindergarten, that make that an enriching experience. So I can't, I don't think I can easily answer your question, Brian, specifically because of these things that we would have to deal with.
What if you had, say, two openings and five people, five families put in, how do you decide?
We could have to create a criteria of how we're going to tackle that.
So those are those, these are the, you asked, right, we're here to give you the recommendations, the, here's our, our thought. We would survey families. What is the, what is the desire? We, we don't entirely know right now, how many families would actually want to switch the choice that they made. And then do we have availability that matches that interest? And then do we need a criteria for choosing or not? It was pretty amazing when we did the survey in the summer, and then we actually had registration happen, and we all got together in the conference room at the high school, and our staff needs for remote, and our family choices matched very well. It was kismet. I mean, I don't know, we had all these other things that we were going to be ready to possibly do. Take students from Mastway and Moheram and put them in one remote class, have a teacher teach a mixed grade, all sorts of things, and we didn't have to do them because our numbers matched. We would have to see what this interest did to our numbers, are we even able to do it? We don't know yet.
I will share that, I have heard personally from about seven families who have said very honestly they're struggling and they would like the opportunity to opt back in. So for me to answer your question, could I find seven seats, depending on the grade in the AM, PM, I feel like we could problem solve. My worry is if the floodgates open, could I handle that? I don't, I don't know.
And the spots are, from what you said, I believe are few and far between.
Yeah, and I wouldn't.
Not a lot of openings.
There's not a lot of openings, but there are some, it really depends on the grade level. We have an anticipation of this conversation, looked very closely at our numbers for AM and PM. If that's helpful to you, we could bring that information.
That'd be good for now.
Next Wednesday.
And it's, and it's one thing to say, we're going to offer it at the end of this quarter, it's another thing to say, well, we would offer it at the end of every quarter, because it is still a transition for a student.
Absolutely.
It is still a transition for that class, it is still a transition for that teacher that's pretty impactful.
Have you had any parents that want to go the other way?
Not to my knowledge.
Would it help you, I mean, just I'm thinking hypothetically, to say that you have a choice this quarter, but, but that's the last choice you, you might have, that you, you might have to say, okay, if you're gonna, if you're gonna stay remote this quarter, you know, you're essentially staying remote for the rest of the year, I mean, it sounds, are you gonna, I mean, I guess, are we going to give that option every quarter, or is there some point?
I thought initially that's where the board was leaning, was to offer an option to the community quarterly, but I agree with you that what you're suggesting would be less disruptive.
We do have families, I'm sorry Denise, we do have families who, for health reasons, for COVID-related reasons, might always have to go from hybrid to remote.
Yeah, I would think that would be different.
And we would then have to problem solve that if that class was exceptionally full. But remote to hybrid, I would think, at this point, there's been, families have had quite an experience with both, with the model they've been in, and making a choice, giving them the option to, to choose, I, I don't know what the outcome would be, but we did then have to deal with that outcome.
Then you have like a wild card every, every quarter, you know?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay.
That's where the anxiety comes from, I feel like that's going to be the school year.
Yeah. Denise?
Yeah, I think it's sort of a delicate, like, house of cards at this point, and certainly, I mean, there could be an exception. I don't personally think hearing everything, and particularly if we're looking at trying to do something different at the middle, at the high, like, we need to leave something, you know, kind of where it is in terms of transportation, I mean, because then you're throwing in the transportation, and how is that going to have to change? So to me, it makes more sense at this point, and I, I hear the parents that want, like, more in-person and, you know, different things, but I think we just need to leave elementary where it is right now, and just look at individual exceptions, like not do this massive survey, you know, hey, do you want to just switch, you know, because you have a little bit of a preference for this or that? Like, if someone has a legitimate need, you know, it's really not working one way and they really need to switch to another way, you know, then you can look at that and accommodate that. But I, I think for right now, we need to leave elementary kind of where it is, at least for the time being.
So the only problem I have with that is that when we built the models out, we said that we would give families the ability to choose. I, I don't feel comfortable saying, oops, sorry, in the middle of the game, we're changing the rules. But having said that, what Tom is suggesting, I guess what, I'll give you like my worst-case scenario, which, you know, it's 2020, is that if you say that this is your only opportunity to switch for the rest of the year, then you're going to have to have criteria, because it really could open the floodgate. Because if, if you're struggling, or maybe struggling a little, and suddenly says, this is, it's a one and done, that, that could be a different scenario of people opting in than if I said, no, 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 you got the third quarter, we can look at it as well. So I think there's clearly going to have to be a criteria that you, you know, that we've built out already if we're going to go down that path.
See, to me, I, I guess, what I'm trying to consider is that we're just, we're not saying that the parents aren't going to be able to choose, we're just postponing it, like, we're, we're just not going to have them choose, like, at the end of the first quarter, like, I just feel right now, you know, to kind of, it's too, having seen how much work it is to get the schedules working, to get the teachers, you know, and the, and the support staff and everything, I, I don't know, I just, I just feel, yes, we did say you could switch, and we can certainly look at individual situations, but I don't, I'm, I'm worried about opening a floodgate and having, it's like going to be the beginning of the year again, and that's my concern.
I think the impact to our students and the impact to our staff, if we had to completely alter our class lists, our placements, and start pretty much from scratch again, would be enormous, absolutely enormous. And I, I don't think for the positive in many ways. Absolutely, there, if, if there are a, a few families here and there who, for very specific reasons, need to make changes, we can work to accommodate them for sure, but an entire switch would be a really big undertaking.
Actually, I don't think you'll know that until you actually.
No, and I'm not.
The only reason I'm trying to give you the devil's advocate is that maybe it'll work out great, and most people say, you know what, everything is fine, there's only a few people that switch, I'm a little cynical just because, oh, the year is gone, but I'm saying that if we do put out a survey and you do do that, then you need to have the criteria.
And that's, and that's exact, I mean, we agree with you, that's why we put that up there, that's, we don't know until we survey, but if we do survey, we, we're saying, to be very clear, right now, it's to determine if it's possible, it's not to say it's a guarantee that because you did a survey, this is what's going to happen, because we don't know, we just don't know.
There are a couple of families that I have to share, it's really been hard to have to tell them that we have to wait until the board makes a decision for the next phase, because there are a couple of kids that it's not working.
Yeah.
Parents feel like they made a grave mistake, they, I have one family that even said they misunderstood what they did when they made their choice and didn't recognize they were committing to it as long as they were. We're trying to problem solve each one of those situations, we have some of those kids coming in for the targeted learning, to be sure at least their interventions are being offered face-to-face.
It's soul-crushing, there's no way around.
It's unbelievable.
Yeah, it's terrible.
So it's something like, you know, doing it on a case-by-case basis with some criteria? I don't, I mean, I'm trying to think what, how you would.
I mean, I think we survey, right? We see who's even interested. We see who's even interested. We recognize that there have been parents who, you know, Misty has been speaking with, and parents, other parents who haven't even come forward who might want to shift. We, meaning you, have said that there would be these options, and there would be an on-ramp and an off-ramp at a particular point. And I think criteria for how to serve those students, whether it's, you know, you don't get your choice of AM, PM, you don't get your choice of school, that's very different from can we serve you or not? And so, you know, maybe we'll get, I wanted to ask about space, you know, if there were 20 additional first graders that were interested, you know, would we have the capacity to hire another teacher? What would we do there?
Yeah, we have space in both buildings if we needed to.
But to UC's point, can we put, like, when you do the survey, just put a little asterisk there, just because you say you want to be in, that that does not necessarily guarantee a spot.
It's an interesting thing. I mean, as a public school and dealing with the youngest students, we talk about equity and access all the time. That's how our decisions are made. To think that there are, let's say, 10 families who really need it, and we're going to choose that only six of them get it, goes against the decision-making that we do on a daily basis for, and we specifically say we're not going to be able to do something because we can't give access to people. And so I'm not suggesting that this conversation is wrong in any means, because we don't know if we can fit everybody, and we might have to have criteria, but it goes against the concept of access.
But I think we find out with the survey how big of a challenge we have to deal with first, and then we can cross that bridge. Is this your last slide?
Uh, yeah.
Do you want me to do another one?
If you, I'm very, I'm interested, well, I've got a couple of que-
I can go make another one.
I was ex-
I got, all right.
If you say, if you say no, then I'll stop asking questions for a minute.
Please, go ahead. I think it's the last.
I would be interested in thinking about, if we had to offer more time in school, what would that look like? More, if we said, rather than focus on the students, or let's maybe make the assumption that the students that are currently remote are happy with the remote model, are mostly happy with the remote model, if we wanted to offer more in-school time to the hybrid students, how would we do that? So that's, I mean, I'm not asking you to speculate right now, but I think that'd be something that'd be helpful to see for next time. And similarly, if we said we need to offer something in-person on Wednesdays for hybrid students, how would we do that? Even if it wasn't with the normal classroom teacher, how could we offer an in-person component on Wednesdays?
Any sort of opportunity, like be open-minded about that, Michael?
Right, right, right. So some combination of, you know, maybe some combination of UA or other enrichment opportunities or, you know, some of the project stuff, project-based learning that we don't get to do other times, that maybe the teacher can plan and somebody else can execute, so.
Okay. Y'all? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for the work you're doing. We have one more thing to do before we expand. We have the survey, a draft of a survey, with some of the questions that we've been talking about. I have a concern about the survey. One of the things I have a concern that to rewrite the survey at this time of night is probably not a great idea.
It could possibly go wrong.
And it seems to me to have like two purposes, and I'm wondering if that's really a good idea, okay? Now, one of the purposes is to kind of get a feedback on remote learning. Now, I'm wondering if that might be a different survey that we do at a different time, because that, you know, you have remote learning, but we're not asking questions about hybrid learning. And so, you know, that's a model that has, you know, whether you want to ask questions about that, and whether that should really come more from the administrators rather than from us. I'm just putting that out there, whether, because then it becomes quite a lengthy survey and with two different purposes. And I'm wondering if we could do just mainly the first part of it, which is the kind of questions we've been really talking about, parent choice, you know, like, you know, like in the K, in K to 4, we kind of posed the question we've been talking about, right? That's what we really need to know, really need to know that. And the 5 through 8, that's a question we really need to know. And then, I guess I would think if we could leave it at that for now, and then if we're going to do remote learning, or, you know, have that be a different thing. I don't know how you feel about that.
I think, I totally agree with you. First of all, I think that the remote learning element, the more I thought about it, I was like, really, I'm sure the administration has been getting feedback, but I think that's really more of from the principal level going after parents and really seeing how it's working. And I think just whether you'd opt in. The only thing I would add in there, and I know we didn't come up with any solid model, but you should also just add the 9th through 12th grade in there.
But Suzanne's kind of already done some of that.
The reason we didn't is because we had that survey information.
Other than that, no, I think that, just, would you, do you want to opt in, or do you want to opt out? It's, oh, I think either of you.
As the person who originally suggested that they could be combined, that was for a couple of reasons, and this group obviously can decide otherwise. We are at the point in the semester, in the school year, where we, the collective we, and maybe it's coming from administrators, should be getting feedback on how the models are going. There, some of it is, you know, is specific at the school level. Some of it does play into our choice on the different models. So the question about, I'm concerned that remote learning has had a negative impact on my child's emotional well-being. Our family has the capacity to provide the support my child needs during the day, or my child needs a lot of support. We even saw this in some of the family questions, that these were the reasons that they wanted to shift to in-person learning. And it's always hard to tell from letters whether it's just the most vocal, or whether this is a sentiment that's shared across the community. And so as we're, as we're looking to make a choice that will affect hundreds of people, not just the dozens that have written in, it seemed appropriate to really understand how, you know, how students were experiencing the remote learning. If, and then the reason, another reason they would be combined is so parents only needed to fill out one link instead of getting multiple surveys, the sense that, you know, this is a heightened moment where families are paying attention to district communication, and that we would get better response rate were it combined. It's not terribly long. They know many of the questions, what are you planning to do? It doesn't take that much more time to put in the, you know, the additional Likert skill questions. And the only thing I'd add is that that Wednesday versus Friday is the flex relearning day. We didn't have a chance to get into that deeply today, and it might come up in the future, but the reason, that particular question also does shape what the discussion around the model itself. But primarily, it was understanding families' experience with remote learning at the various grades as important context for the decision that we'll be making.
I guess as I read it, you know, remote instruction, you know, there are different kinds of remote instruction, you know? It seems to me, I'm, I think these kinds of questions are important, but I think that, I think we need more time to get it right, and I'm not sure that we got it right in these. And I wrote, I wrote some of them myself, you know, so I mean, it's, but I mean, if you talk about remote, what if, are you talking about, like, if you're in the hybrid model and you have the afternoon? Is that what you're talking about? Are you talking about, are you fully, fully remote?
Well, you'd know that by grade. And you'd know that by grade and by whether your child has come to school as part of instruction learning days for their grade.
Well, the only one I'd say is like 13, we kind of answered the question, just for how we thought it was ineffective already. It was like that the Friday model tended to lend itself to disengagement. And it's like the Wednesday model, and actually, during the break, I was talking to Suzanne. One of the things we modeled at the high, or surveyed at the high school, is when you looked at, there was two peaks of when it was the most difficult for a student. There was the freshman year, and then there was the junior year, particularly, it was the steepest peak in the workload. And so that Wednesday actually is really beneficial to those that take the heavy junior year schedule. But again, even from what everyone else had said, it was like the Friday tends to lend itself to opt-out early for the week, and it doesn't really serve its purpose. We could still survey it, but it's like, I think we already have that question kind of-
And we might get a different answer from the elementary schools, where, I'm just saying, it's, I think the bigger question right now is whether to include the, you know, the longer survey.
I'm totally fine with the way this is, because we have this habit, I think, at this board sometimes of taking something that's simple and complicating it. It's almost, you know, it just makes it difficult, because every time one of these comes out, somebody gets online and says, I don't get it. And then all of a sudden, 20 other people say, I don't get it. And then they all sit around and just say, I don't get it, and they don't fill it out, or they fill it out improperly. So this is actually pretty simple. I read through this, and I was like, this is exactly every question I would ask in the whole, in the whole thing. And I kind of like the way it's set up, and I just don't want to change it. I don't think we want to send out too many surveys, because at some point, you get survey fatigue, and people just stop doing it.
You're okay with this.
So I'm totally fine with this. I mean, granted, there are some things on here we already know, but it's good to at least get some validation if that was the case.
I think, I agree. I think at this point, more information is good, and this is a good opportunity to get more information. And I think it's really well put together.
Including the 13 questions.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with Al.
It doesn't hurt to be honest.
I think we already know the answer, but not-
Okay, so-
Yeah, I do think we should be adding some language that reminds folks that this is, to help us understand the landscape, and that this is not a re-enrollment or a commitment.
Say that again, Michael.
That this is, this is information for the school district and not a re-enrollment or a commitment either direction by the parents to change, or by the school district to change the model. This is information only.
That's what I said to UC before.
Yeah, yeah.
A little constrictor. And then I would add in there, again, that just because you say you're opting in, there's no guarantee you'll get in, and that we, it may be subject to a criteria of who's enrolled.
I had, I would suggest in 3A, for example, you noted your child is currently in the hybrid model for instruction. If given the choice, would you like to stay with this option? Yes, my child would stay, or no, if given the choice, my child would switch? Do you, is the, if given the choice wording sufficient, or does it need an answer?
I would still put-
Okay.
Yeah, it's still pretty simple.
Okay, I'll leave that too. The wording of that too, the administration.
We're writing an introductory paragraph too.
Yeah. That, to me, still sounds like you're kind of gonna, could potentially hold the parent to that choice, I guess.
I had a question like, if currently in the remote model, yes, would you switch? Like, yes, would we have like no opinion? Are we doing, were we going to force them to go yes or no? I guess I could see advantage forcing them to go yes or no.
Yeah. Which question are you looking at?
3B.
3A and 3B, or just yes, no, there's no, like-
There's no, there's no, like-
Maybe. I'm thinking about it.
Well, we don't want a maybe. We don't, maybe is a wishy-washy.
I'm a fence-rider.
Okay, so we're, we okay with this, with the introductory paragraph?
Cool. Thank you.
I think that's all for-
So what we'll do is we'll get that out tomorrow, tomorrow. We'll give a deadline of Tuesday, end of the workday on Tuesday, based on what's something Michael said and Suzanne just experienced, that when we're asking for information during this time period, parents are eager to provide that information, and unlike other times in the nine years I've been here, anytime we've asked for information, we get a deluge of that information on the front end, and then it trickles in after that. So Suzanne's experience was exactly that. She had 350 replies in 12 hours, Suzanne?
Yeah.
So, and I think that gives us a good taste, rather than just the emails, we'll have a much better taste, even though, as Suzanne said, she's leaving hers out there for a bit, really, it's really just to get a better impression of what's happened across the district as opposed to, you know, some scientific survey.
Could we make the deadline Monday? Because there is a comment section here, so there'll be, I will have a hard time getting through it if I don't get it until sometime on Wednesday, and we're going to try to make a decision on Wednesday. So if I had another day, that would be helpful.
Monday?
It's like curtails it, but I think otherwise, we, it's not good.
Well, if we're going to get most of the feedback in the first couple of days anyhow, hopefully, we're not losing too much.
Okay. Looking around, making sure that everybody's okay with it, Monday?
It's going to take that-
Yeah, I don't have time to read, you know, the number of comments. If we don't get the survey to us till Wednesday, yeah, we won't be able to read it all.
We could say to be considered, but in the, in the board discussion, please respond by Monday.
And then, and then, can I also request that when you send it out, you send the entire, the raw data set, as well as whatever analysis you put together, so that-
We learn that the first time.
Okay, thank you.
We'll give you everything we get.
Well, again, we, it's a short window, so if we want to see it a different way, there's not time to do that, so.
And also, I had asked if we could have it for the meeting in terms of the number of teachers that answered on the Guild for the different schools, you know, how many, how many teachers-
Oh, the numbers from the Guild survey?
Right, in the Guild survey for each school.
Yeah. Sorry, I forgot to do that.
That's okay, yeah.